Council will call them into order for the record is the second Tuesday, December 6, 2022 at 4:31 PM. We will begin this city council work session with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Burton. Councilwoman Pearl.
Here.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Here.
Councilman Borton.
Here.
Councilman Hogland.
Here.
Mayor Simison.
Here. Next item is the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hogland.
Move adoption of the agenda as published.
Second.
Have a motion, a second to adopt the agenda as published. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close name. You guys have it and the agenda is adopted. There are no items moved from the consent agenda. Or, I think that's in the place. So, because next up is a consent agenda.
Apologies on that.
Councilman Hogan.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda and for the mayor to sign and clerk to attest.
Second.
Have a motion, a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close name. The ayes have it and the consent agenda is agreed to. So with that, we will move on to department commission reports. First item up is discussion of civic block time extension request. I will turn this over to Council President Hogan.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, before we go, I'm point of privilege.
Councilman Burton.
I just want to give a big shout out to my good friend Luke Cavanagh. Give it up. He's in the house. It's good to see him.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
It's good to see you, brother. Truly is.
Good to be back. Good to be back.
Right.
And for a second, point of privilege, Councilman Borton, do you have anything that you'd like to state?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll just continue to recuse and I don't participate in this discussion or deliberation. So I'll continue that practice.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hogan.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is a item that we're going to discuss an extension request by River Caddis for the civic block. One of the things we'll hear tonight is some more numbers regarding the move of the Hunter lateral. I want to make sure everyone understands that there might be some things we can do with the Hunter lateral. The bids that we've been receiving are for the moving the Hunter lateral for both the River Caddis property and the area if a property around the Methodist church. So that is something we're going to look, would like to look into the phasing of the Hunter lateral and possibly the city putting out requests for bids for that in phases or for the, just the River Caddis portion of the civic block for that, maybe through a bid alternative type of thing. But anyway, so that I just wanted you to be aware of that because a time extension would allow us to do that and maybe see if we can lower the cost of that particular project. So anyway, it's, you know, just the extension request is something to allow us to make a very intelligent decision in this economy that is changing. And just something to keep in mind, and there might be some options for that extension that we can discuss later tonight. And just keep in mind, whatever we decide to do, it will go back to the MDC council for their final action since we have to be everyone needs to be in agreement on what to do on this. So with that short explanation, Mr. Mayor, I think we're ready to roll.
Okay. I guess I will see if there's anybody. Ashley, I don't know if you had anything that you wanted to add, or we do have a representative for River Caddis here in the room? Or if council just wants to dive right into the dialogue.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, thank you for the privilege of being able to sit down. So I don't have to deal with my back issues this evening. Ashley Squires, administrator for Meridian Development Corporation. Councilman Hogland summarized a meeting that we had on Friday with River Caddis, just brainstorming some solutions and getting prepared for this meeting. River Caddis is prepared to give a short presentation and I think it would be best to allow them to do that. I'm happy to answer any questions you all might have afterwards. But I think what is being proposed this evening in terms of the time extension along with some of the things that Councilman Hogland spoke about in terms of doing some additional investigation with the Hunter lateral. I think that is something that MDC board would be very agreeable to.
Thank you, Ashley. Then with that, why don't we just invite John with River Caddis to come forward and deliver his presentation.
Sorry, everyone. John McGraw, River Caddis Development. Good to see everybody again. It's been a while. I really would like this to be a discussion today because some of you that haven't heard from us about what we've been doing and what's been happening over the past few months. So I figured I'd just kind of download some of the information that we've been passing along. And the reason for this request and then open this up to any questions that you guys may have, no matter how difficult they are. I mean, we're, we're here to work with you. I mean, the goal is to figure out how to do this project. So whatever those questions are, however, we get there. I'm hoping this information does help kind of paint a picture of what we're seeing and give a little bit of background. I will be quick on this. So there's not too many slides. So where we started. You guys all remember our drawings and renderings from our initial presentation. What I wanted to start off by saying is this project was financially feasible. This was, we had run numbers, we had a similar project that had a lot of similar, while this looked completely different. The subcontractors, the foundation, the overall design was very similar to a project that we've completed in Ada County. And from that, we were able to really understand what we're dealing with. In fact, so much so that when we started this project, I mean, at ground zero, if you put project next to each other, apples to apples, we started with a huge financial win on this project because of all the things that you mess up on a past project, right? So we started off looking really good. Another date to remember is that January, I'm sorry, July 22nd. That was our contract execution date. So at that date, we're looking bright eyed, bushy tailed, ready to go. I'm pumped, right? So we had efficiencies. We began with a financially feasible project. We spent from January to July going through public meetings, I believe it was roughly seven, give or take between that. We navigated that process very well, I thought. We integrated some of the comments from the public into our design, some of the problems that people were seeing and, you know, we flipped the building pretty much on, from our original design. So I wanted to jump into a little bit of the timeline of what's happened since, what we've done, right? We did that pre-development. We got our project ready for entitlements for, through CCC. That July 22nd date was when essentially we were looking to pull the trigger on construction drawings. We had to do one thing first, which was spend some resources to finally understand and get everybody on board with the cost of this facility. In the, in a parallel path, we had also been working on the design and development in terms of the engineering and architectural of the Hunter lateral. So going through the local approvals, the regional approvals, going through all of the process and policies that are needed to vacate alleys and vacate utilities and relocate utilities and going through the irrigation district. That July 22nd is our execution date of our contract. We pulled the trigger on a comprehensive cost analysis of this project. Now, keep in mind, we had been doing rough cost estimates all the way through. We had those subcontractors, we had the same general contractor, we had the same architect, we had the same landscape architect, we had the same civil engineer for the same project. So we were checking this whole time. It looked like it was still tracking very well, even though we were starting to see a trend in costs going up. But given that our project in Ada County that was completed was also seeing increases in costs. And we also had a flood and a fire. We had two floods and a fire and all finished all the way through COVID. I think it was August 7th, we received our costs from our contractors. August 8th, I sent an email to MDC requesting a meeting. The substantial increase in costs, which I will go through, I'm not going to go through line by line, but I picked the main ones to show you kind of some of the things that we're dealing with in terms of these costs. But it was, I mean, they started off the conversation by asking, are you sitting down? Kind of thing. And it was tough. It was tough to walk through because it was so demoralizing, so very different from where we, where we started. So we contacted the city about these findings. And at this point, we're like, all right, how do we figure out a path? We don't want to change the project. We, we know what it looks like when it's done. We know that we can fill it up. We know we can manage it. We know where the rents are. We know what our pro forma looks like. What is this delta that we're dealing with? Is it something that we did wrong? Is it something that we've failed on? And we keep running into this issue of it's just the start cost. It's just what we're receiving right now. Then our thought is, okay, well, maybe it's us. You know, we're from Michigan. Our contractors are from Minnetoka, Minnesota. We did a great project. We paid our bills on time. We had really good references for that project and how we started, how we finished. Created a lot of really good relationships with, with government bodies, but also contractors. But maybe it's not being from here. Maybe we're not getting the best prices. So then we found a local group as well, who does a lot of similar projects and, and obviously we, you want to be loyal to the people who, you know, you go to the dance with, with our contractors, but we did have to see for ourselves just in case that was something that was happening to us. So we went through and reran a full comprehensive analysis and they were very, very close. Now, we did that for both the Hunter lateral and we did that for all of our project costs as well. And so, and I also have Jason Denzimer here from the land group who ran our most recent cost analysis of the Hunter lateral, if there are questions directly towards the engineering and design and costs that we come up with there. And so from July 22nd to today, a short amount of time. It's not a ton of time, right? It's just a few months that we've had to really try to figure out this problem. And I think on our side, personally, professionally, we're worried that we're not going to be able to come up with a creative solution in time, like from August 7th to December 31st. So we've come and asked for a extension and we believe that extension, or we believe the reason for that is things outside of our control. We're definitely not the only people dealing with huge cost hikes or interest rate hikes. We're not the only project that's like, hey, we'll pump the brakes here. Let's see what we're dealing with and see if this calms down a little bit. That's happening across the nation and it's happening a lot here too as well. So I want to show you just really quick our cost due diligence and what I saw. So quickly, the methodology. I did MEPs, so mechanical, electrical and plumbing, and then I did parking structure. And I did the cost. I did them per unit. We had 200 units. We had 400 stalls. And what you're seeing in this photo or this graphic is on the top, you're seeing what we're looking at in thousand per unit for each of those. And I'll, I have another slide here that shows graphically a little bit. So you're not looking at the spreadsheet. Then underneath, to save you trying to stare at what those costs are, that is a cost index of different cities across the United States. And what we did is we measured a similar project of similar costs and similar size in Minneapolis. And we looked at historically what those costs look like against Boise, right? And so what we show there is Minneapolis on average, because of various different reasons. Maybe it's labor, maybe it's union labor, maybe it's cost of materials, maybe it's just how hard it is to do things in Minneapolis. It on average is typically 14% higher, construction cost on average across the board. So that's just a, just a note. So the yellow here is where Meridian came in and I typically don't jump into our numbers. But this is what made us sit down and I wanted you to see what I was seeing because they're so out of whack. So parking stall, this is hard cost per stall. We finished a project in 2021, paid $28,000 hard cost to stall. So just to give you an idea, let's, we're saying soft costs are roughly about 30%. So if the soft cost for a 35, in, in the red here is a 25% inflation from the jewels. So that's where we were benchmarking, give or take, that, that cost we're going to come back in. At 35% plus 30% soft costs, that gets you to roughly 44, 45 million. And at 62,000, a stall with soft costs, it gets you to 81. The gap right there alone is $14.4 million, 14.4, just in parking, just in parking. Over and above. And you can, the percentage there, and if you just look down, you're looking at almost double the cost of what it costs to do in Minneapolis. So here's a, here's another graphic. Remember what I said, at 14% Minneapolis cost versus Boise, the actual index of where Boise is compared to Minneapolis is 69% higher than Minneapolis. And so this is a, there's something going on, right? Whether there's huge projects coming in, whether I can't get straight pricing, whether, you know, there's a lot of different things that we're dealing with that lead me to believe that this can't continue the way that it is and continue doing development. That's why everybody's kind of taking a step back. I don't believe that this is a forever thing. It's still a super desirable place to live. There's still a lot of people coming in. There's still a lot of people looking for houses and looking to rent and looking to start their, in, in looking for places to bring their family. So now jumping into Hunter lateral cost, the assumption that we all looked at 500,000 for the Hunter lateral in September, Opus came in at 1.9. In November, we reran it again with the land group just to make sure and land group came in at 1.85, 1.86. So a substantial increase. Now, there's a various reasons for that, if you want to know a little bit better of why. We do have, as I said, Jason Denzimer from the land group to discuss some of those. Not going to jump too far into this. The pursuit of this project, our, our investment, a lot of design, a lot of legal, a lot of public involvement. A lot of costs for Hunter lateral and engineering and construction drawings and, and project meetings and policy meetings and multiple cost analysis over the last few months of us just trying to wrap our heads around this, this issue that we're dealing with. The reason why we came here today, or I came here today, and, and my father Kevin was going to be here, but got, called me at 10:00 PM last night and said, I came down with something awful and spent hugging the toilet. So I apologize that he wasn't here to speak, but it was better for him and everyone for, for good reason. So our, what we're requesting is the time to work with everybody here to try to figure this out. We do believe that we have an awesome project and it's going to be an awesome project for a really long time. We're requesting a year because there's so much work to do that I can't get done in a couple of months. We have to look at a lot of different efficiencies. I'm not talking about changing the project substantially. We understand that if we change anything substantially, that we will have to go back and, and, and do that. We want to take a harder look at the Hunter lateral as councillor, Council Hogan mentioned earlier about different cost operations, management, how to bring this to a financially feasible path that makes sense for this project, or if there's no River Caddis for the city. And then talk about progress reporting to make sure that you know that I'm continuing to try to come up with solutions for, for these issues. But we really, we really would respect and request that we get this extension, that we can look for a solution to this. So I, I've gone over a lot of the, the summary here of what we've done. I'm grateful you guys have taken the time to hear me today. So I'd like to open this up to any questions or discussions that we can have.
Thank you, John. Appreciate it. And if I could just add to one thing, you know, through the conversations that I've been a part of, understand that the city, if River Caddis ever decided not to build, would be on the cost end of the Hunter lateral. I in no, in, in my role as CEO could not come and ask council to support a $1.8 million movement of the Hunter lateral if we were doing it today, let alone anybody else doing it. That portion alone would be the reason why I would support, you know, the extension so we can get to that. Because we, we have to have comfort level where we would be, I mean, we just did an irrigation replacement golf course for that cost. You know, it's crazy to think about moving this piece of infrastructure to blocks compared to that and stuff. So just wanted to let you know where I was on this is like, I can't in good conscience ask the private sector or you to skip behind that cost at this time for that project. It does need to be, even that just needs to be re-scoped into what is a feasible cost that's immediate need, not maybe what's best long-term for the future of all of downtown, just the cost for this project. So with that, council questions for John, Ashley, myself, or anybody else in the room?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
I know our conversation here this evening is about an extension of time and sort of a big picture question. So I don't want to get crazy into the details on what's going to happen, you know, too far down the road. But you, you brought up the significant costs that you're, just think of it, significant bids that you're receiving. Being in and around the real estate market in our area, I had, I wouldn't say a front row seat, but a second row seat to what happened during the downturn last time with commercial and residential construction and have a lot of relationships in this business. And what I'm hearing is that costs are normalizing in nearly every arena, except for possibly steel and some of our HVAC, especially regarding the electrical and the micro chipping in the HVAC. So curious if you've seen that, how recent your bids are, and if you're seeing that, I know multiple large builders in our area are laying off labor and there's an anticipation that labor costs will reduce. If not, if they haven't already, they will be reducing and and that shipping costs are normalizing. International shipping costs are normalizing, trucking costs are normalizing. So I guess I'm trying to understand, you know, are these, how old these numbers are, and if you're seeing a change in that. I, I agree with you. These numbers do not look like what I've seen. Not at, not from an individual standpoint of folks just having worked on, on their individual homes and also, you know, what I've seen for residential construction. So I don't know if there is some sort of disparity between these bids in the size and scope of project that you have, from what we might see with something smaller or something larger. You'd think that if you're putting 300 HVAC units in, that you'd have a less expensive price than you would on an individual unit, things like that. So I'm wondering if you've received the impression from either our local engineering groups or the advisors that you have in Minnesota, that these are normal numbers and, or not. Because I, I don't, I'm just think you haven't asked enough contractors to, to be honest. So curious how that conversation has played out within the advisors you have.
So our Minnetoka group, Opus, was our first go at this and that those numbers came in early August. So that's just a frame of reference of this year. That was kind of like the, the whole, you know, what moment. And so we, when we had these discussions, it was, it was the same thing that you were asking. I mean, we're like, why, what's going on? Because even they're saying, I, we haven't seen numbers like this anywhere. It doesn't make sense. And that, that's all I kept hearing is it doesn't make sense. So then we reached out to local groups as well and we got those mid to, I think, late, late October. So less than a month, or sorry, bad math, just about a month, just over a month. And they were very similar. And they're like, I, it, it, we don't really know what to say, but these are the numbers that they're giving us. And so unless someone's ready to put a shovel in the ground today, those are the numbers that were given, right? So the contractors are going to give us, we're going to give them drawings or, or a level of drawings. And then they're going to say, okay, well, that, for that job, that project, we're going to assign a cost to it and we're going to mark it up X percent for, for a certain amount of time going forward. And these are the numbers that we're getting. So now if we reduce these costs a little bit to where we get a little bit more comfortable, where we can say, okay, we're going to get full drawings now. And then we can go back out and they have more information to bid on and they can get more accurate and they know that they're going to get the job. Agree, completely different story. But the problem we run into, just like anything, is are you going to pull a million dollar trigger on drawings if you're 26 million dollars off? You're like, we got to figure that part out first. But all really good questions that we're still struggling with too.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Strater.
Hi, John. Thanks for coming. If you get the extension, let's say it's a six month, two six month extensions or one year extension, whatever that ends up looking like. What skin in the game are you going to have? In other words, like what are you going to do during that time to continue investing in the project? The biggest thing I see is we have this big kind of chicken and egg issue of the drawings. It's a big investment. Most developers would have moved forward on the drawings if they were somewhere close to the cost that they thought. What's it going to take to move those forward? Like what are you going to be looking for in terms of milestones to move those forward? And, you know, what will you specifically be doing during this time to move the project forward? And, you know, what will you specifically be doing during this time to move the project forward?
Thank you. You know, in a typical project, right? I hate saying this, but it, it never starts off working. It could always starts off with a delta. It always starts, starts off somewhere a little high, right? And then we work to bring it back down and there's always changes. There's always efficiencies that we create, especially when you don't have a prototype. I'm not using the same prototype and same drawings and just moving it city to city. It's not what we do. And so everything's different. In projects like this, where, and I honestly, I I'm in kind of a weird position because I haven't been this far off. Like I, I'm substantially off and I can't even say I'm substantially off. I mean, it's, I have contractors that that do three to 400 million annually and they're going, this is really messed up. None of this makes any sense. And I rely upon that expertise and all of that. So in terms of, do I have a direct benchmark of like, hey, what's the number that I need to see to pull the trigger on drawings? I just need to see it coming down to something that we can figure out. When we start seeing numbers that are double what they are in any other market, it's hard to do anything. So we need to see some downward trends and we might be seeing that. There are some things, you know, we had switch gear. We had a conversation with another folk and another municipality that it was 51 weeks. And we just did it again. It was 91 weeks. You get switch gear. You have to purchase that switch gear 91 weeks before you can use it. And that's not cheap. And so there's these random things that keep happening in, in different areas that, that we deal with. So that, that benchmark that you're asking, we need to see a downward trend in costs. We do believe that that year and the reason why we asked for a year is that we will be able to get there. Now, if this happens sooner than we think, great, we're ready to go. We were ready to pull the trigger for CCC and construction drawings back in July. So I'm hoping that turns a corner here in spring. But what we're hearing from experts in many different parts of the country is that it's not toward, you know, the third, fourth quarter of next year. I'm hoping that's when we see it. I'm hoping that we can come with progress reporting saying, hey, we're getting there. We're getting closer. On top of that, what are we going to be doing? If there is faith in us that we're the right partner, just like you're the right partner for us in this type of project. And we're going to pursue different ways of construction. We're going to pursue many different subcontractors to pull this together. We're going to be running those analysis. We're going to be changing the architecture. We're going to be changing certain things to a certain level. We will obviously double check. We'll take some liberties as to what we are changing and making sure that it's not substantial. Like we're not going to lop off a floor. But let's just say the windows are a certain size now, and we changed those so that they're bigger and it looks better. Those are liberties that we would take, I would say. And maybe that reduces the building envelope and reduce costs of the building envelope by 35%. So we just need the confidence that we're still working with the city to come up with this solution. And there's just, it's hard to tell you everything. There's a ton of work. But we're, I mean, we're still stoked about this project. We still want to do it.
Mr. Mayor.
That's what I'm sharing.
So are you guys planning to act as the GC now? Or are you still hiring someone under GMP? Help me understand if your thoughts have changed.
Uh, that has not changed. We would still have a, a CM or GC oversee the project. Still have architect, still have engineer. We'll be creating efficiencies within the hopefully soft cost structure and how we're, and how we're developing the interior and moving things around. Hopefully. So, I mean, anything that we change affects rent.
Yeah.
Take stuff out. It takes, it lowers this and it's a, it's a balancing act, but, but no, nothing substantially has changed in terms of taking people out and switching them. None of that's changed today, especially when we got cost back of local group in there. They're right next to each other.
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind.
That's what I'm sharing.
Yeah. You know, one concern that I have is that you guys will get into this project and let's say that the costs come down and it seems doable. You proceed and then partway through the project, something changes again, right? I just want to make sure there's no anticipation that the city is going to work with you financially at all to complete the project because it's, this is not feasible in terms of what our municipality can do, in my opinion. And I, and I just wanted to kind of clarify that because, you know, I wondered if you were thinking of acting as your own GC and trying to put together the subs and stuff yourself and that would take on a different element of risk, I think, to cost overruns that would make me uncomfortable.
Uh, no, and a project this size, um, our, our company is eight, eight to nine people and we're in Michigan. So I'd essentially have to move into a, the construction trailer to, to do that. And while I do love it here, probably not going to do that. Um, in terms of, just to clarify your question or, or just make a statement towards am I going to ask the city to give us a grant of some kind to cover the gap? That was never the intention, never has been.
And if I could add, it wouldn't be legal because we've been on the property and we couldn't do it even if they asked. So.
Good thing I said no.
Very good thing you said no.
Mr. Mayor.
That's what I'm sharing.
That's all I had for questions. I mean, I, I have different thoughts, but you know, I, I will just say a year is too long to me. I'm very uncomfortable with the city committing to any financial obligation for the lateral, as the mayor said. Um, so I'm, that's a non-starter for me. We don't need to do the lateral today. It's not an obligation we currently have. I don't think that the cause of urban renewal or this project merits taking on that financial obligation. I understand there are some factors outside of your control here. And that's tough. So I get that, you know? At the same time, I mean, I, I have lost some confidence, just being really honest about this. You know, shorter timeframe, if the city had no financial obligation, you know, could we give you two six-month extensions that we could mutually agree upon to keep moving it forward, something like that? I might be able to get my head around. Cause then I think there'd be some more check-in and we could see if things change or not. And then that would give us more flexibility. Um, but that's just some feedback for me.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
That's one pro.
Speaking of an extension timeframe, six months, 12 months, I want to understand more about the the schedule that OPUS put together, that's would effectively have started on the first, that was included in the packet that we have for the, the agenda tonight. And the slide that you provided, the two don't quite line up. And so wanted to know if you could share your thoughts on that, that the, um, schedule that OPUS provided shows that the contract extension be that the preferences to have the contract extended through nine, five, I don't, of 2023, I don't know which contract they're referring to. I assume it's the, um, the memorandum of understanding, but I don't know what contract it's referring to, or if it's referring to the purchase agreement with the city. So if you could kind of clarify that and also help me understand if, if this is what you're proposing, or this is just what OPUS's ideal schedule would be and where some of the gaps are between like, let's say the contract extension ending in September of 23. Nothing seems to be happening until December of 23. Can you kind of go through those first three sections with us in relationship to what you presented?
So just so I can confirm, because I don't have that in front of me, that schedule was redone and then submitted with the letter that I sent. Okay. So what I had OPUS do is basically just add a year from that day. When we had originally been talking and said, hey, you know, there's going to be some things that are going to change. It's not necessarily that the OPUS timeline is to give an idea of what it could look like if things did move a year, but it's purely estimated. It's not to be counted on. Because everything's going to change, right? So different things, it gives you an idea about how things long take, when certain milestones are hit. And, and that was the purpose for that, but hopefully I don't want to say, don't read into it too much because things will change, but I just wanted to give certain ideas and updated schedule. But when you don't know what's going to happen, it's hard to, to give one, you're.
Mr. Mayor.
That's one pro.
The reason I ask that question is, um, I have a lot of concerns. We will be 12 months down the road from here and in having more challenging conversations, given what could, could potentially happen in the economy. And I don't want to spend another year waiting without some more specific milestones and information and then be having more difficult conversations at that time. So, um, I know that there, that a lot of that is out of your control. I understand that. Been through these conversations many times in variety of arenas. But I have some ideas about what I'd like to see happen over the next six months. It would make me more comfortable doing a second six-month extension. And I can certainly provide those thoughts to MDC and they can communicate that with you, but I, I just, you know, I don't, I don't know, for example, I don't know what your financing structure looks like. I don't know how much of, of cash you have in a relationship to how much you're financing or leveraging. I don't know how interest rates are affecting you guys. I don't know if you're going to have investors come to you in a year and go, gosh, this sounded really good two years ago, but we're just not liking how it looks right now. And we're, I mean, that's my concern if we give 12 months, that, that we will be there and be in no better place than we are. And we have, we have that responsibility to answer to our residents about those things. So, um, I just have, I, there's a few things I'd like some more information on. That, that will take too long for us to discuss tonight.
Okay. If, if I could touch on it briefly. In a good partnership, you knowing what I'm doing is important. So in terms of, and I, I put it in here for progress reporting, tough questions, tough conversations, tough presentations. Fine with it. Um, in, in fact, you deserve it. It's what partnership is, right? We're both trying to work towards something. If you have questions, I'd rather you ask me the question rather than assume I'm doing something poorly. When it comes to the financing. If I believe we went through a process with, uh, with the city, with WIZ and our financial institution who monitors how well we're doing financially. And we did that privately because we don't want that public. And walked through what that looks like in terms, and I didn't, I, I may have skipped over this for the board, but we don't go to historically have not ever gone to a fund or a group of investors. We have done it internally and we have some relationships that we, that have come in and said, hey, that's an awesome project. We'd really like to be a part of it. Here's an offer, but we do these projects as our family, which is great. However, when you're sitting in front of a board and you're about to lose the project, you're also about to lose all of the money from your family that you invested to do it. So it comes at that risk, but we have been checked on. Once we get to that point where we're going, of course, we can have a double check to make sure because you have, we're fine with that, the, in, in the same form that we had before. So we, we do want you comfortable and it's going to come, you know, a give and take in that relationship. Um, but happy to have those conversations, happy to come back and talk to you and answer questions, whether they're tough or if they're flowery and great questions.
Mr. Mayor.
That's what I'm cavern.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate that last kind of round of, of commentary because I think it touches at least for some of my concern. So if I'm hearing you right, again, your request for time has nothing to do with financing and more to do with cost. Is that an accurate statement?
100%.
Okay. But Mr. Mayor follow-up.
Councilman Karen.
Councilmember Strater is, I think, touched on a handful of times about, you know, a six month with a six month, which to me is interesting. And, and you haven't quite responded to kind of her, her feedback on that, except for to kind of acknowledge that's what she said. And so talk me through, if you were given a six-month time request with an option for a secondary six-month extension, what would you hope to ascertain in the first six months? And what would you think that you would need to bring back that would? I guess, what do you feel like that you would need to know a year from now as opposed to six months from now that would give you greater confidence about this project?
The, um, thank you for the questions. So the, the reason for the one year was in, in our due diligence about when folks across the country see these trends really coming downward in terms of costs. That's going to happen towards the end of next year. And so if we go to six months and that still hasn't happened yet, and I come back in six months and say, we've, we've exhausted the efficiencies where we've still saved quite a bit. We've done a great job, but we're not there yet. And you're like, well, it's been six months and you haven't shown enough. Then we've invested all of that sweat equity to make this real. And we still just need the bottom line cost to, to reduce. And so in a perfect world, I would have asked for Q2 of 25. I thought that was far too aggressive.
And, and Mr. Mayor.
That's my cavern.
I, I think you, excuse me. Yeah. You kind of get to kind of where, where I am, which is I don't know if you're in any better place when it comes to costs a year from now. So if, if we're kind of in acknowledgement that we need more time than a year, let's be honest about that. And if it is longer than a year, I think then that is a good conversation for the council to say, look, we brought in, you know, I think the term that you use when you first proposed is, is pick the horse that you want to ride with. And the council did that. And I think that we have sat side by side with you through this process and we've had hard conversations and um, certainly there has been mixed feelings about this project, but at the end of the day, if we're going to be sitting here a year from now, to your point with the sweat equity that you and your family and your organization has put in, and we're still not there, we need to be talking about that now as opposed to six months or a year from now.
I don't disagree. So there's one thing, one comment I'd like to add to that. So if I didn't believe this project was viable. Every day past today, we're going to be spending money on this project.
Sure.
That we could potentially not get back. And that is our hope that we're starting to see enough downward trends that by the point that we get to this year and hopefully much earlier, honestly, it'd be much better if it was much earlier. That we can pull the trigger on construction drawings. And at least at that point, if I've came back to the city council and the MDC and we're at November and I'm like, we've pulled the trigger on construction drawings are going to be done in January and then we're going to rerun the cost in February of, of 24. So if we're seeing that downward trend enough to mitigate and manage the risk of the project, that's where we see that this can happen. And that's also why we asked for a year.
Mr. Mayor.
That's one pro.
So all of this is predicated on the assumption that costs are going to decrease. Which I think is a fairly safe assumption, given what we know right now. That's the only way we can make this decision, what we know right now. I've read three articles this week with very differing opinions about what the Fed's going to do next week and interest rates. So it's, it really is truly an up in the air situation for all of us in some capacity. And I know that is affecting your decisions as well. What? So let's make the assumption that, that there, that the costs are going to decrease. And you don't get to the place that you want to be in the timeframe that we hope to see it. Have you kind of thought through what your plan is at that point? I, I just, we're, we're asking for a 12-month decision based on an assumption. And it sounds to me, and this is the first time I've actually heard you say this, that you have And it sounds to me, and this is the first time I've actually heard you say this, that you have group advising you that costs are going to be at a, at a place that are manageable by the, by third quarter, fourth quarter of next year. Based on what information, this is the first I've kind of heard this. And then, you know, what are you thinking as far as, okay, if we don't get there, what does this look like for us? You all have done this many times. You no doubt been in situations where you've had to have pull the plug discussions. So what does that process look like for you and your team?
Great questions. So as to the costs and how we arrived at when we think that these are going to happen. Yes, I'm the one saying it today. But we've arrived there from we've, we've built in seven different states. We've used a lot of different contractors with a lot of different brokers and a lot of different folks working in capital markets. So a lot of its conversation, right? And so those people have a lot of experience in the field and experience in economic trends. Are they always right? Absolutely not, right? They're giving us their best guesses, the crystal ball. And I might not be helping myself by saying that, but it's true, right? We're using our best guess now to these costs going down. I have four, five, five multifamily projects that I've already put off for a year. Just because of this reason. Now, the difference in those markets is I'm not looking at cost hikes this absolute extreme. And that's why I believe that they're going to go down. And that's why I'm asking for that extension. And so are they going to all the way go down? They might not. But if we have that time to integrate efficiencies and and rework some of the the structure of how this building fits together cost wise. I think that there's a really good shot. I really do. And that process of pulling the plug, the investment goes away. And that's a scare. I mean, I, I made a, my body language changed when you said that and it was almost like I laughed. But I I have to tell the, I gotta go back to our family and say it's not going to work and that goes away. And that's not a, that's not a good day for anybody. Well, much worse for me, but not saying that the city doesn't have the investment in it as well. We do understand and don't take that lightly.
And and you, I know Councilman Pro, you and I were at the ATI last week and we we heard rates, those people are projecting they're going up until March of next year before we see them top out. And then you have BM, how long will it take for those rates? Everyone's guessing, nobody knows. In this economy, I mean, we, under that scenario, what six months doesn't do us any good. Quite frankly, because if they keep going up until that hits and it gets on top of the whatever it was, I don't know the financial term that they were describing, but you got to have that happen before you see all parts of the economy start to push downward and it's not going to take one month at that point in time. But they also say we're in the treasury value, we're unique. We we may not see that any of this downturn in in the way that the rest of the country may see it either. So it's nobody knows.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Perro.
I just want to quickly say, I I'm sorry for that hard question. The reason I asked it is I think you can tell the folks that went through the downturn and those that didn't, that we always want to be more prepared than we were the last time. And folks weren't asking those questions early enough. And I hate having those conversations. I absolutely hate asking those questions. They sound so negative. But I, it answers to those kinds of questions help me understand the perspective that any contractor, any developer is taking. And it's important for me to understand how you're thinking through this, not just what you think about it. So.
I appreciate it. And and one more thought to that. And I don't know if this helps or not, but I did share with Liz in one of our conversations a while ago. In 2007, we built one of the largest, if not the largest at the time, student housing facility in College Station, Texas at Texas A&amp;M. And nobody was getting financed. And we saw the trends. We put it forward and it was an amazing project. Had lazy river, first lazy river in student housing facility. But it gives you an idea that not only have we been through the downturn, but we've been financed during the downturn. Maybe that helps.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember. Tough discussions, but necessary discussions, I think. And I appreciate you flying to brilliant and having this conversation with us. I, I personally, I, I wanted to come to this meeting tonight with inherent some solutions and it seems like you know, there's just a lot of uncertainty, no fault of your own. It's just, I just think that's the market that we live in. I think there's a huge difference between the residential market in the, in the inner area and the commercial market in our area. I think we're experiencing some crazy things residentially and commercially, I think that it's still gangbusters. And I don't know how much longer that's going to last. Usually there's a lag between the two. I was, I I'm still of the opinion, I, 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 I'm not sure that six months is going to be enough time. I don't know that a year is going to be enough time. And at the end of the day, sometimes time is, timing is everything. And maybe right now at this moment just isn't the right time, you know, as much as we want it to be. I'm, I'm, I've always been a huge proponent of downtown. I, 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 everyone knows that. And I want the downtown corner to be as successful as possible. I, I, with that said, I just, I think that that it's just right now is not the, not the time. And and I think that there's a greater chance that you know, in a year, we're going to have to and just redo the project and have it, because I think it's going to look substantially different. If this can, if if we continue to go with this project, I I just think that it's going to get to a point, whether it's a year, a year and a half from now, that it's just going, it's going to look a lot different than what, than what it looks like right now. For a lot of different reasons. And so I, 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 I'm, I'm of the opinion that I, I, I'm, I'm probably in the camp and it looks like I'm on an island, but I think I'm in the camp of just punting. You know, I think we should wait and I probably not in a situation right now to extend the one year I could be talked into six months. I just don't think anything's going to happen within six months. I do believe that, you know, rendezvousing in six months. Having a conversation, maybe there's a miracle, maybe something's changed. I just think a year is just way too long. So those are my thoughts.
If I could, if you don't mind, I made an extra slide that I didn't share. I I did share with everybody, but I haven't really gone through it. One, I didn't know it was appropriate. And then I was also, it's also kind of leading into you not granting the extension. So I didn't really want to show that. But I did kind of want to walk through just an idea of what does happen if you don't, or if there isn't an extension. There's a lot of time that still has to go through with the new process, right? Unless that time, there's still if if a year is given and within that year, right, if a miracle happens, as as you mentioned, or if by chance this economy turns around in some aspect enough to pull the trigger. As you mentioned, the project's likely not going to look the same. Which means it's going to have likely less of an impact economically as a, as a single project, right? Depending on what it is, obviously, it can be something that none of us are really thinking about that we don't know. But are we also, if we do put this out, and I say we loosely, right? If you do put this out, are you going to get someone to respond to it? That's going to create that substantial economic gain? And can they guarantee it? Or is it going to be the same situation except for you're going to lose an additional 12 months just in the process to start it all over again? And and I would just wanted to show this slide because it is a risk to ask you guys to give me an extension. After only four to six months of us starting the process after an execution. But the upside could be higher. It should be higher. And it will have a lot of the things that we all discussed and all agreed upon in terms of public use, in terms of commercial use, in terms of parking, in terms of these other things. So yes, you, I, I am requesting that you take a chance in in the partnership. But there is also a chance that nothing at all happens for a long time. And you could let me pursue and see if I could make something work. Because I do have a lot of things done already in terms of ready to go, pull the trigger and go. Not trying to completely change your mind, but I'm kind of trying to change your mind.
Mr. Mayor. Councilman Hogg. I want to wish you well on on changing Craig's mind, you know, so I haven't mastered that yet, so.
And just provide the information and try and hope.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, just to comment, you know, I, I, I all along, I've, I've been interested in the 12 months, just as it's been stated. I don't think so, think, things are going to change very quickly in the future. I mean, in six months, you know, it could be worse. We don't know where we're going to be, but to me, 12 months was a reasonable request. However, if if there are things people want to put into place to check in at six months and possibly have some options, I, I, I could go along with that. I mean, that's something that to get the votes, if we need to do that, we need to do that. It's just the matter that I, I don't think any of us, if we had a business in the economic conditions today and our numbers were upside down for whatever project it is that you're involved with, we would move forward and put money into something that we know we could, we could lose it all. I, it's just, that's just smart business not to do that. And so we entered into this partnership at a time when things look good. We thought, hey, we're going to get, make this happen. It's going to move forward and things out of all of our control have have changed. So that's where we are. And that's why I would support 12 months. But if you want to have some sideboards on it, let's discuss that and move it forward. And 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 I, I think River Caddis should be a partner on this. And I, hopefully, Councilman Strater, you heard that there's no city money involved in that. And Councilman Cavanagh had had heard 100%. So on his question, so something to discuss. How, how do we do it? What's the relationship moving forward? What does that look like?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Strater.
Yeah, so I just think that 12 months is too long to extend. I think two six month extensions gets you to the same place. I don't expect in six months, you're going to come and say, great news, all the trends have changed. But I do expect in six months that you could have figured out. You know, maybe you're going to do modular construction. Maybe you're going to do a totally different approach. Maybe you could have figured out in that time a different way to work through this. And, you know, maybe you will have value engineered yourself to a better spot. So at least there would be a progress report at that point. It gives me the confidence that you didn't just like set this on a shelf. You've been working on it diligently and it's moving in a good direction. And then, you know, that would give me confidence to give you another six month extension. It's a mutual decision we'd all have to mutually agree on. And then at that point, hopefully, for the second six months, your trends are going in the right direction. I just, to me, a year is a really long time to tie the city up without the ability to put this out to an RFP. I'm not the, not that we would get an RFP going, that would be the same project. I think it'd have to be going in a really different direction. I just don't, I don't, I don't like tying this up for that long without kind of a milestone to very seriously check in. And I feel like six months will force everyone to do that. That was my rationale for proposing it that way. Hope is not usually a strategy. But in this case, you know, you, you may, you may get there. I understand what you're saying. And often projects do come together. Things can change. You're going to pull some levers on your end. Other people are going to pull some levers for you. You're, you're going to hopefully, if if the trends change in a positive direction, a year from now, it's, it's going to move forward. There are things you can do on your end too, right? I mean, you know, I, we talked about some of your costs, we didn't talk about all of them. You know, the, the finishes and stuff aren't going to move the needle, but you know, it could very well be that the cost of concrete, for example, will change or the cost of steel will change. And some of the things that to Councilwoman Pro's point would really move the needle. So it could be that some of those things are evolving in a good direction. Six months from now, some of them aren't. But you know where the bulk of your risk is. I just feel like, given the amount of work and the amount of investment, if we're not on the hook to do the lateral, I'm okay with giving two 12 month extensions. But that was my, just to explain my thinking.
You meant six month, I'm sure.
Absolutely. I'm sorry, I slipped up on that. Two six month extension options to be mutually agreed upon.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pro.
I agree with Councilwoman Strater. I'm, I'm favorable to that recommendation, but I want to get clarity on what that means, what that does mean for the timing of the Hunter lateral. Am I understanding from reading the letter that you had sent, reading the MDC's response? Am I understanding that you're, you're anticipating delaying the completion of the project for a year? Or are we talking about finding an entirely different solution for how to to fund it altogether?
And we're talking about the Hunter lateral, right? The funding of that. So what I can say today is that we originally started with a rough estimate of 500,000 where the, the city was comfortable with a certain to a certain extent. And so were we. But you quadruple that number and then we have a different story. And Mayor touched on that earlier. So if we don't find a financial solution and not just, not the financing, I mean, if we may have to phase it, but if the city does not want to finance it. Right? Neither does the developer because we need to make sure, like upfront, we need to make sure that you know, as we've negotiated this process, the Hunter lateral gets paid for by the project. If not, then it goes to our clause in the agreement. And so we have to go back and look at, okay, are there other alternatives in doing this Hunter lateral that reduce the cost? But we have to do that together. And then we often also have to decide, is it the right time to do this? Or do we postpone it? Completely, I mean, until it's the right time to do it. Because we may have to wait until it's not irrigation season to test it, but it doesn't mean that we can't do work. So it'll be a collective mutual decision to go forward. But it's just, it's really hard to answer which way we're going to go with it. Because there's so many things that we have to, one, agree on and two, engineer.
That's one pro.
In your opinion, do you think that the, the the cost element of it could be figured out by the end of the six months? Obviously not proceeding with the work, but do you, do you believe that those conversations can be had? And funding that Hunter lateral move, the 1.8, hopefully, the costs don't change again. Do you anticipate that there can be a solution found by the end of the six months?
I can't confidently say either way.
Mr. Mayor. Councilman Hogg. If I might jump in on this, I, I think Councilwoman Strater, what we're looking to do is if we can break that apart instead of the whole project. I'm sorry, who did I say?
You said Strater.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Perro. Man, I just cannot figure that out. Anyway, the, the phasing of the Hunter lateral, if we can break that apart and look at doing separate sections. And it might be the, the civic block location. Maybe costs come down, maybe they don't a lot, but be by being a smaller segment, maybe we can figure out a way to make that work. Maybe we work with MDC on some funding strategies that could, could get that project done. But it will take time to, to, to do that. Plus, as you know, our bidding process, Councilwoman Strater, isn't the fastest. There's processes we have to follow by law. So to put that out to bid and check those numbers at times. So that's where, that's where I think there are some options that then in in six months, we can come back and and kind of look at that and go, okay, what, what is, what is doable in this situation? So hope that helps.
And we can work to collectively present a recommendation to up with some different plans.
So, so council, we've reached that point in time where if we were a few months down the road, I would have done a hard stop 10 minutes ago. But in this case, I'm trying to like run us to the point that Caleb, I think you understand we're going to be delayed again on that topic. But do we have a direction we can? Someone want to make a motion? Is there further dialogue?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Strater.
I guess not really a formal motion, but sort of a motion. So I would move that we grant two six-month extensions to be mutually agreed upon. And just making it clear that the city will not take on any type of financial obligation around the Hunter lateral construction at this time. Hopefully that's sufficient.
Second.
Mr. Mayor. I would.
Is that a second?
I'm sorry.
Second, the motion.
Have a second discussion on the motion.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize. I didn't hear Council President Huglan's second. I'd like to add to that, that we have a recommendation for the progress of Hunter lateral by the end of those six months.
The motion maker agrees with that.
Second, agree.
Mr. Mayor, I would agree and just point out that, you know, some of that's going to be on the city to, to do. And, and I don't know what, what that looks like in terms of. Yeah.
And I would say based upon the, you know, I think that the Hunter lateral will continue to be a joint conversation. Who pays for, if, if this decision is made to move it, who pays and what fashion at one point in time, there is an agreement with things. But I think it will be a joint dialogue. We could put it out to bid and they pay us for that bid. That, you know, there are ways that we may be involved in the, in this whole process as we look at it. But I think it will continue to be under the guidelines of the agreement that we currently have in place.
Mayor.
Councilwoman Strater.
Yeah, I, I think the idea would be, just to clarify, because I think I see where Councilwoman Pro was going with it, would be at the time that we consider the second extension for six months, that we would have a mutual discussion around the strategy to approach the Hunter lateral, just to further clarify.
If it's not already been resolved by then, yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perrow.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate that, Councilwoman Strater. The thought behind that is, for me, that's a significant element as to whether I agree to a second six-month extension. But also that's right before our budget season. And I'd like to know if the city is committing itself to a significant amount of dollars before we go into our budget season next year.
Do you mind if I say something really quick?
Yes.
About the motion. Is there any way to, I know that you've mentioned it being mutually agreeable. Is there any triggers that if River Caddis has continued to work and provide progress reports to council or MDC that that can be automatically renewed? So that gives us a little bit of confidence and pushing forward. I know it's a tough question, but if we are continuing and, and really doing everything that we can and continuing to invest, it would be nice to not to have it at complete discretion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
I'll just, I'll respond from, from my perspective on that. Going into tonight, I, I don't think I was supportive of granting any time request. I think that the feedback from you this evening around kind of your plan to a degree almost reinforced that I don't know if we would be any different a year from now than we are today. I know you feel a little bit differently. To me, I think that six-month period shows that opportunity on your part to follow through on the work that you're doing, the progress reports that you're doing. And it, as, as one person who will have that vote six months from now. If I believe you're making meaningful progress in a collaborative effort with MDC and the city, then I will be supportive of granting a second six-month. I'm not in favor of an automatic six-month that is based on your determination that you have, have met the intention of the council's wishes. I think a six-month is a it, it's, it's a true partnership. This is shaking hands and say, we're going to work through this together. I recognize that so much of this that was thrust upon you and your family and your business was not of your own doing. Likewise, and councils touch on this time and time again, we have an obligation to our citizens. And I think that a six-month with an opportunity for us to come back, much like we've done tonight and speak collaboratively. And you ask the hard questions of us, which I appreciate, and we of you, and continue this strong partnership. That we can do that together. We can do that six months from now and we can do that again a year from now. And we can do this together when we cross the finish line together. So I would be in favor of, of any type of an automatic six-month. For me, I'm the spot there. Let's do six months or, or nothing at all.
Mr. Mayor.
Which way was that one? Councilwoman Perrow, sorry. You were both on the mic and I couldn't tell where it came from.
As is common, my fellow council members often explain things better than I do. Thank you, Councilman Cavanagh. That is really was very clear and I appreciate that. And I agree with you. Just to clarify, when, when I'm talking, I want to clarify kind of the expectation that I'm asking for. I'm not asking that the funds be available in six months. I'm not asking that we have everything completed to start work on Hunter lateral in six months. What I'm asking for is that there is some sort of mutual solution for how it's going to get done. That's, that's all I'm, I'm getting at. I'm not you know, that, that the conversations are had and that there's some sort of verbal agreement on to, you know, what's going to happen with it, timing and what each party anticipates their role will be. I hope that clarifies if it wasn't already clear.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Scher.
Um, so as a maker of the motion, I would say my feedback would be no to a put option to us on your part. I think it should be mutual. But I think you've heard feedback directly from me, Councilwoman Cavanagh, Councilwoman Pro, and probably have a good idea from the other council. In terms of where their head would be at, at that first, at that second six-month extension. So hopefully that feedback is good feedback that we can move forward together. Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Scher.
Um, so I, I would continue with my motion.
Are you calling the question?
I don't think I'm allowed. Isn't that your role?
You, you, anybody can call the question.
Really? Wow, I learn something every time. All right.
In fact, technically I can't call the questions.
Really?
No.
That's fascinating. All right. Well, I'd like to call the question, please.
The question has been called on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose nay. Guys have it. The motion is agreed to and we have at least the city's direction that we will punt to MDC for their consideration and your consideration as well.
Thank you all.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Councilman Cavanagh.
For clarification, maybe they're from you or from Mr. Mary. If, if I recall, I mean, with this being now volleyed over to MDC, it would take their concurrence to our motion. Did MDC disagree? What happens at that point?
Armageddon.
Terrific. Where's the council, Councilwoman Cavanagh? So, yeah, so there's a, there's a mutual arrangement with MDC and such. If, if there is no meeting of the minds, then the current agreement expires at the end of the month.
Okay, that, that was my assumption. I just wanted to make sure that that was the case.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, Ashley Squires. I believe our board will be agreeable to this motion. What we will need to work through, however, with legal counsel on both sides is when the extension would be fully, what the extension would, that start date would be. Would it be January 1? Because the MOA technically expires on December 31st. Will need to work through any other adjustments to the purchase and sale agreement and the MOAs as well too. So legal counsel is here to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Mayor, just to add to that. We didn't pursue our motion such that it was an automatic, this is what we do. It's a negotiation of the terms in accordance with what we're talking about. So we had some additional desires regarding the purchase and sale agreement and we'll sit down with you all and try to do the or with, with your legal counsel and try to do the Vulcan mine meld and, and get all things together.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, counsel. Then Huglan.
To that, to that six-month question, you know, with the expiration on the 31st, my assumption was all along, then it kicks in January 1 and off we go for the six-month countdown.
All right. Well, then that will conclude. I'm 30 on our agenda. I am 31. We will reset to a different date. I don't know that you have worked with the clerk during this time to find a date. Mr. Hood.
Mr. Mayor, just real quick, we just talked about next week and it sounds like that workshop is pretty full. So then we're at the first of the year. So I will continue to work with your office, the clerk, council president. Next week doesn't look favorable though.
Okay, all right.
Sorry, Caleb.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Huglan.
I move we adjourn the work session.
Motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye by saying aye.
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 Hello.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Byrne.
Here.
Councilwoman Burrow. Councilman Cavanagh.
Here.
Councilman Borton.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Mayor Simison.
Here. Next item is Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd all please rise and join us in the pledge. Mr. Quick, we may end up set up under public forum?
Mr. Mayor, we had none.
Okay, then with that, we will move right into our action items this evening. First up is item one, Public hearing for South Black Marlin Lane Vacation, H twenty-two dash zero zero seven eight. We will open this public hearing with staff comments from Stacy.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. The applicant has submitted a vacation application for South Black Marlin Lane. It's for the remainder of the private road and utility easements. The site consists of approximately ten acres of land, zoned CG, generally located in the south of eighty-four and the northwest corner of South Meridian Road and West Overland. It is the Roaring Springs Wahoos property. And the applicant proposes to vacate the remainder of the private road and public utility easements for South Black Marlin Way and a portion of West King Salmon Lane on lots ten through eighteen. Block one of Interstate subdivision. Interstate subdivision, sorry, Interstate Center subdivision was originally plotted to be a business park with individual lots having access served by a private loop road. Since then, the subdivision has been developed into a single recreation facility, which is the Wahoos Roaring Springs. The, in two thousand and six, the owner recorded a document that eliminated the need for South Black Marlin Lane and West King Salmon Lane. However, the city's process was not completed to formally vacate the private road and applicable utility easements. And in twenty twenty-one, the applicant approached us with his future expansion plans, the Roaring Spring Springs Water Park, which included new poles, attractions, site work, and operations buildings, mechanical building, additional cabanas, food beverage building, and a new parking lot. And upon further review, it was determined the roadway and the utility easements needed to be vacated to allow expansion, and the project was conditioned to complete this process prior to occupancy of the first certificate of occupancy of the building. The applicant has submitted letters from all potential easement holders who have all provided written consent agreeing to vacate the easements. There was no written testimony, and staff recommends approval of the vacation of the private road and utility easements request as the applicant has proposed. And I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Stacy. Council, any questions for staff? Is the applicant here? Are they online?
Mr. Mayor, they are. My apologies.
Okay.
Mr. Callahan, you should be able to unmute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Got all the right buttons.
You say your name and address for the record, please.
Craig Callahan, Quadrant Consulting, nineteen oh four, West Overland, Boise, Idaho. And Stacy's done a great job of putting all this together and basically it's just cleaning up stuff that was planned twenty-five years ago and isn't needed anymore. So it's kind of a paperwork process. Any questions about that?
Right. Thank you, Council. Any questions for the applicant? No questions. Thank you very much. Mr. Quick, we have a move and a certified testimony on this item.
Mr. Mayor, there were none.
Okay, is there anybody present that would like to provide testimony on this item? If so, come forward at this time or use raise your hand feature. See nobody? Would the applicant like to make any final comments?
This will be great to get cleaned up so we can finish building Roaring Springs as a great added feature to the city of Meridian.
All right. Thank you very much. Councilmember.
Move that we close the public hearing.
I get the motion.
Have a motion second to close the public hearing, all in favor, since by by Saint I.
Aye.
Posse, nay? Guys have it, and the public hearing is closed.
Mayor.
Councilmember.
Move that we approve item number H dash two zero two two dash zero zero seven eight.
Second.
Have a motion a second to approve item H twenty-two two dash zero zero seven eight. Is there discussion? If not, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Strater.
Aye.
Byrne.
Aye.
Burrow.
Aye.
Cavanagh.
Aye.
Borton.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carries, and the item is a great two. Thank you very much. Next item up is item two, which is a public hearing for Lost Rapids West, S H P twenty-two dash zero zero one four. We will open this public hearing with staff comments from Mr. Parsons.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I should have let Stacy do the next couple items. She did such a good job on the first one. Next item on your agenda is the Lost Rapids West short plat. If you recall, this was scheduled for a November hearing, and during that hearing, it was right before the hearing, I noticed that there was an issue with the noticing, and so we bounced this or re- noticed this for the If you recall, this was scheduled for a November hearing, and during that hearing, it was right before the hearing, I noticed that there was an issue with the noticing, and so we bounced this or re-noticed this for this particular hearing this evening. So the short plat before you again consists of 1.63 acres of land that's currently zoned CG in the city. And it's actually a recorded lot and block subdivision in the Lost Rapids subdivision that was subdivided in 2021, if I remember right. The graphic on the right-hand side is the short plat. Recently, a property boundary adjustment was approved, and so this particular short plat is basically subdividing all of Lot 4, Block 1, and a portion of Lot 5, Block 1, which includes the added acreage, and that was a discrepancy that I noted in front of council a couple of weeks ago. I'd also mention to you that all the landscaping was installed with the Lost Rapids subdivision, so there are no additional landscape requirements for this particular project. Access is to this site is from a shared driveway that runs along the south boundary, but there is an access point that was approved with the subdivision to Chinon in this general location. So staff is recommending that the lots take access from this driveway on the south and not have any additional curb cuts or access into the driveway that comes off of Chinon Boulevard. I did receive a written confirmation from the applicant that they're in agreement with the conditions in the staff report, and with that, I'll conclude my presentation and stand for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Bill. Council, any questions for staff? Would the applicant like to come forward? Evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Stephanie Hopkins with K-Media Ring, 5725 North Discovery Way in Boise. I'm in agreement with the staff report and the conditions of approval. Bill did a wonderful job of summarizing our request. I don't have anything to add, so I don't think I need the presentation either, but I'll stand for questions if you have any.
Okay. Council, any questions for the applicant? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Craig, we may sign up on this item.
Mr. Mayor, we did not.
Okay, is there anybody present or online who'd like to provide testimony on this item at this time? If so, if you'd like to come forward. Or use Raise Your Hand feature. We only have Christie from ACHD, so I don't expect to have too many raising the hands online. All right. Does the applicant like to make any final comments? If not, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Perrow.
Move that we close the public hearing for file number S H P-2022-0014. Second.
Have a motion a second to close the public hearing during discussion. If not, on favor, seen by Saint I.
Right.
Post nay. Guys have it, and the public hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Perrow.
I mean, the move that we approve the short plat request with the conditions in the staff report for S H P 2022-0014. Second.
I have a motion a second. Is there a discussion? If not, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Strater.
Hi.
Byrne. Perrow.
Hi.
Cavanagh.
Hi.
Borton. Hoagland.
Hi.
All eyes, motion carries, and the item is agreed to. Thank you very much, Stephanie. Nice to see you. Next item up is item three, Public Hearing for Ledge's Business Center, S H P 2022-0015. Open this public hearing with staff comments.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Next item on the agenda is the Ledge's Business Center, short plat. The site consists of 2.2 acres of land and currently zoned LO in the city and is located at 4121, excuse me, 4120 North Linder Road. There is history on this particular parcel. In 2006, it was annexed in with the LO zoning designation. Even though the comprehensive plan designates this for medium-density residential, at the time that it annexed in with the LO designation, they took advantage of that provision in the comprehensive plan that allows for applicants to request an office designation when they abut an arterial roadway to meet a certain acreage count, and so that's why council at the time granted the LO zoning designation. As part of that annexation request, there was a subdivision that accompanied the LO project, but the applicant failed to process a final plat and record that final plat. So therefore, we have essentially office zoning with a development agreement on the subject property.
Okay.
So right now, we work with the applicant. There wasn't one administrative approval, and I'll share that with you. So the graphic here on the right is an office lot that, or excuse me, is a CCC that we process in our office to approve the construction of a two-story, 20,000-square-foot office building on Lot 1, Block 1, which is the central lot here. Since that time, the applicant met with us and decided that they wanted to create the second parcel and build a future office building on the site. I would mention to the council that there is an existing metal storage building on Lot 2, Block 1. Typically, we don't allow accessory structures to remain on a parcel without a primary use, but in this case, in working with the applicant and talking with the applicant, it isn't their intended use to at least convert that at some point in the future, and in the interim, the office building that is on Lot 1, Block 1, will utilize that building for storage. So in our minds, or at least in looking at the code, we still feel that that meets the intent of the code, and it is an accessory building to the primary office building on Lot 1, Block 1. As I mentioned to you, at some point, it will be either converted or removed from the property when a second building is proposed for the site. The only condition of approval that we added as part of the short plat process was we wanted to make sure, you can see this hashed out area on the short plat. That's really the easement that shows cross-access between the two lots, but we also wanted the applicant to amend the plat note to make mention that there's also shared parking within the development. The site does have limited access because it fronts on an arterial, so where you see the shared property line is the one and only approved access point, and this other northern access you see here was only emergency access only. So this will serve as the primary access to the development, as I mentioned to you. So it's critical that we have a cross-access shared parking agreement, and that will be noted on the plat. I did receive comments from the applicant. They are in agreement with all conditions of approval for the short plat. With that, I'll conclude my presentation and stand for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Bill. Council, any questions for staff? Okay. Then I'll see if the applicant can come forward.
Like recently, I was told to be brief. I'll be brief. For the record, Kent Brown, 3161 East Springwood. We are in agreement with the conditions of approval. The office building is built. The paving's done. Landscaping's done. It's just not subdivided yet, so we are looking for your approval. Stand for any question.
Hey, can't, council, any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor. Councilman Hoagland. Just real quick, Ken, not an issue with the short plat, that sort of thing, but there's been some complaints with neighbors about lighting for the existing facility, and I know planning's working on that, so I didn't know if you were aware of that or not, so.
Council, any other questions for the applicant or comments? All right. Thank you very much. Scott came in and signed up on this item.
Mr. Mayor, there were no signups.
Is there anybody present that would like to try testimony on this item? Can I assume you wave your initial comments? Okay. Then with that, so I have a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Strater.
Move that we close the public hearing.
Second motion.
Have a motion a second to close the public hearing. On favor, seen by Saint I.
Right.
Post nay. Guys have it, and the public hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Strater.
Feels fairly straightforward, and that we're processing the administrative details behind decisions that were already made. Set in mind, after considering all staff, applicant, and public testimony, move to approve file number S H P 2022-0015 as presented in the staff report for today's hearing date.
I get the motion.
Have a motion a second to prove item three, is there a discussion? If not, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Strater.
Hi.
Byrne. Perrow. Cavanagh.
Hi.
Borton. Hoagland.
Hi.
All eyes, motion carries, and the item is great, too. But you can't. And council, I really like the way we're kind of mixing it up, taking turns tonight. This is really great. Yeah. All right. Next item up is item four, public hearing for our Alden Ridge subdivision, H 2022-0059. Open this public hearing with staff comments.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Next item is Alden Ridge subdivision. It's applications for annexation and preliminary plat.
Next person. Next person.
Try that again. So where was, where was they at? So we'll go on to sites and property existing zoning and location. So the site consists of 21.7 acres of land currently zoned RUT in R1 in Ada County, and it's directly located east of State Highway 16, north of Chinon Boulevard. So you can see here in the graphics that they're right on, right on the fringe of our area of city impact, which is unique. You can see the adjacent zoning to the south. We have annexed property that's currently RA, and that was known as the Pollard subdivision. And the reason why I bring that up, because it comes into play on providing access and utilities to this particular project. So the applicant is here tonight to discuss with you annexation of 24.8 acres of land with the R4 and RA zoning district. The R4 area consists of 20.35 acres of land, and the RA portion is 4.45 acres. The plat consists of 65 building lots and 10 common lots on approximately 21.7 acres, and gross density has 2.97 dwelling unit acre. So as I mentioned to you, this is a low-density residential development where we anticipate densities less than three acres, unit, three units dwelling units to the acre, where the applicant is right at essentially the maximum allowed in that land use designation. The reason for the split zoning is, one, to provide a buffer and a transition to the RA to the south, as I mentioned to you. So you can see here, the RA portion of the development is located primarily along the southern boundary, and the remainder will be the R4 portion. And again, the applicant is also providing a 30-foot-wide landscape buffer along that southern boundary as well, not only as an amenity to the development, but also to add to that transition as you move farther to the north. The applicant is proposing to develop this subdivision in two phases, and this is, you can see that if you can follow my cursor here, there's the phasing line. So this would be phase two, and majority of it would come online with, with phase one. So 45 lots with phase one, or 40-plus lots with phase one, I think 17, or I think it's 19 lots with phase two, if I remember correctly. If you had a chance to look at the aerial, there are three existing homes on the property, or four, I believe, or there's four county lots and three existing homes. One home will remain on this larger lot, and I think the other ones will be removed as part of the development. Also mentioned to you, along the southern boundary here is an existing private street that was planted with the original county subdivision. The applicant will be required to maintain that access to those properties until such time as there's another public street access provided, or the Pollard subdivision to the south subdivides. And that's been noted in the staff report as well. So here's the proposed landscape plan for you this evening. I can tell you that the applicant is proposing 3.18 acres of open space, which exceeds the UDC requirements. Amenities include a picnic area, pathways, dog waste stations, and a swimming pool. And you can see that located here central to the development. The applicant also received approval for an alternative compliance request. So typically, when we have developments that abut a state highway, we, we get a 35-foot landscape buffer outside of the right-of-way. But because the applicant is proposing to keep the existing residents and wants to maintain some of the character and some of the mature trees on the site, they have requested alternative compliance. So the director has approved that. So essentially, we're allowing them to plat a common lot of 20-foot wide, 20 feet wide, and then remade, landscape the remaining excess right-of-way along State Highway 16. We had in the record, and the applicant has confirmed that ITD is amenable to that happening, and they'll enter into an agreement with, an encroachment agreement with ITD to make those improvements, or staff's recommendation. As I mentioned to you, the reason why I brought up the Pollard subdivision, this is a schematic that was in the staff report to show you what's actually occurring in the area. So council has essentially approved the Pollard subdivision, which is south of this particular project. What hasn't occurred is no construction has occurred on the site yet, and in order for this area to be served, there has to be, one, an interim list station to be built, and, two, these areas that are in the right-of-way needs to be constructed so that this has public street frontage. Currently, the only access to the development is the private, is this portion of the private street, but this portion that goes across the Pollard subdivision is not public right-of-way. It's just basically an easement to this gentleman here, and so both staff and ACHD have conditioned the applicant that we will not approve or a final plat until such time as this portion of the road is constructed and private street connection is provided, including the interim list station. I would mention to council that the plans are into the city for approval. Just comment, construction hasn't commenced yet. So again, that is a condition in the DA and a condition of ACHD staff as well. As far as the home elevations for this particular development, the, this applicant is a custom home builder, so it's going to be semi-custom homes and custom homes based on the needs of their clients. You can see there, it's modern-style farmhouse style, and again, the DA requires the applicant to comply with the submitted home elevations. I let the council know that the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of this project at the November 3, 2022, hearing. Testifying in favor was the applicant and John Peterson. No one testified in opposition, and there was no written testimony submitted on this application. Because the commission was actually complimentary of having R4 development and such, having a plan that met the goals of the comprehensive plan, that there really wasn't any common topics of discussion discussed by the commission either. And there were no conditions of approval that were modified, modified by the commission. So really, for council tonight, it's a pretty straightforward application, except for some of the access issues that I mentioned, but I think we have that covered, not only by ACHD, but also in the development agreement. So I'll go ahead and conclude my presentation and stand for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Bill. Council, any questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Strater.
Bill, one thing that really stuck out to me, normally, we like to have city services available next to the property, and you guys are conditioning it on the final plat. How typical is that? When have we done that before? Because I can think of several developments where we've said, we don't have services available here yet, and we've held off, but just trying to think of how many times we've had another project that we think is in process, and so we've used that as the final plat as a condition to provide those services.
Yeah, Mayor, members of the council. It's, it's not, it's not uncommon. That's typically what we see here. In this particular case, if a lot of these plans weren't moving forward, you'd probably have a little bit, probably have more reservation from staff to support it, but because we know the applicant is submitted plans, and they have been approved, just haven't started construction. And we know that this applicant has worked closely with Brighton to make sure to understand their timing. We feel confident that although it's, we like to have things available, we feel confident that by the time you get all the engineering done and Brighton does the construction, by the time they're ready to develop anything on the site, more than likely, those things would be in place, and that's why we recommend approval, approval along with the commission. But if things weren't, like you said, if they were 10 or 20 years, five, six years out, we probably wouldn't be supporting this application. The other unique thing about this is that it's not city water. It's actually viola. So the only utility we provide over here is going to be, is the sewer, and I know, again, I know the applicant is working with Polite Works and have plans approved for that, that to occur. So I hope that answers your question.
That's helpful. Thanks.
Council, any additional questions for the staff? Then will the applicant like to come forward? Dave, I know it's been a while, so have you state your name and address for the record?
I will. Bill, do you mind loading up our presentation for me? Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Dave Yorgison, and I'm here part of the development team for Adler Ridge, Alden Ridge, sorry, Kyle. And my, my address for the record is 14254 West Battenburg Drive, Boise. We have a short presentation, but the intent tonight is to not have a long presentation. Staff's really done a great job of highlighting our, the points, the, the application and what we're presenting to you today. See if Bill's got it here, and I'll get through it. While he's loading it up, I'll say it's nice to see Councilmember Cavanagh virtually.
Well, thanks, Dave. And it is to the mayor's point, it's nice to have you back in this chamber in a little bit different capacity. We always enjoy your perspective and feedback and appreciate having you be here tonight.
Thanks. I won't add more than that. But anyways, I know you've been struggling. So it's good to see you tonight.
I think so.
Thanks for pulling that up, Bill. So again, I'm part of the development team of the Alden Ridge subdivision. My presentation will cover the following points. Just a quick introduction of the site, go over the application details and highlight staff report. So his staff has said, as Bill has said, the site's just over 20, about 22 acres in size, located the northeast corner of Highway 16 and just north of Chindon, we do have furniture on Highway 16. We're contiguous to city limits, the comp plan is low density residential. As you said, we're not exceeding the allowed amount of density. We're not even rounding up, we're just meeting the allowed and, and the goals of the comp plan for the density. With the intent of trying to match or, or better in the transition of the densities that already planned for future development to the south and also to the east. Both staff and the planning zoning commission did recommend approval. So the Alden Ridge subdivision is a total of 65 residential units. They're all single family detached homes. As Bill had said, the plan is for two phases on the south and west area will be the first phase and the northeast will be the second phase. And we, we're providing a greater amount of open space and quality amenities for the development. As he said, we have just over three acres of open space, which is 14.4% of qualified open space, which exceeds the required amount. We have nine amenity points, which is quite a bit more than the required four for this site. And as mentioned, we have a swimming pool, picnic area. The pathway network, dog waste stations and strategic areas and also usable open space park area just behind the pool, in case you want to throw the frisbee or, or toss the football or run around or whatever there. As mentioned, there are quality homes, a variety of architecture being planned. We have the modern farm craftsman style homes, well, some, some other just modern style, broader variety. We anticipate for this development as there'll be custom semi custom type homes. And these are the different additional samples, Bill, that we provided to you as requested from planning zoning for the, for the patio type, this is the smaller homes with two car garage, but still variety in architecture. As we go through the development processes, I know it's really important to get neighbor feedback and have discussions with them. We had two onsite meetings with adjacent neighbors, plus a lot of one-on-one discussions. And the discussions really were quite supportive and neutral through the process. They liked the, they appreciate the density, the transition of lot sizes, the quality of homes and the amenities we're proposing. Really the only question or concern was raised was water. And the reason for that is there's a development just to the south and west, an existing commercial site. Franklin Sensors is the building owner and they have one building and they want to build another one. They're expanding the facility, they have two different locations, a smaller and a larger. And they cannot build a larger building until they have more fire suppression capacity for the fire sprinkler system. So we're working with the water company, Viola formerly Suez, and we are providing a well site to this area. So it wasn't a question of we don't like what you do, it's more of can you hurry up please? As we're working with and providing that well site to the water company so that they can then expand their business. As we look at the staff report, we agree with all the conditions in the staff report. A lot of times we come to the city and say, we like everything, but this one or two little things, can you just help us a little bit? And that's not the case tonight. We agree with all the conditions of approval as presented by staff. I will highlight and then address the questions about traffic and access was raised here tonight. And the timing of Brighton's development to the south of us and also the alternative compliance for the buffer on Highway 16. So again, regarding traffic, ACHD provided a staff report. We agree with all of the conditions approval of the ACHD staff report. The street that Bill was talking about, staff was talking about is Waverston Street is not yet built. We've been talking with Brighton quite a bit through this entire process. They too are looking forward to the well site for their larger commercial buildings. It would be nice to have the added fire suppression for them. They have now cut the streets in, they have approved plans. And I have a letter, an email, if you want, I can give it to you tonight, but John Wardle, I've been texting back and forth and, and they plan on starting construction with utility, wet and dry utilities. They're just a few weeks, again, the street's already cut, the plans are now approved by ACHD and City Meridian. So they are moving forward. The reality is they will be finished long before us. It takes us months to draw up construction plans, many more months to get plans approved. And so we are not even worried about this sewer and all the street will be built long before their final plat be built and, and recorded long before we actually run into construction. So we're not worried about the condition of final plat approval necessary prior to. Additionally, the request was from the fire department, can you provide a secondary access? You have more than 30 homes, which is understand a standard requirement. This illustration you see here in this exhibit is actually from Brighton they gave us to follow. And so if they have not yet built this, I'm going to follow my cursor here. If they have not yet built this, they've given us permission to build that section of roads so we can have that secondary access. The, the main obviously access Pollard's built and Waverston's built, so we have the access into the development. But we're looking forward to this as even being more or less a main entrance. So we look forward to having that built into our community, which will be done in conjunction with Brighton. Lastly, on alternative compliance, that furniture was discussed, staff has mentioned it's already been approved by the director. But our goal is to not minimize, but actually do a little bit better with the landscape buffer along Highway 16. We're preserving existing trees adjacent to the home along the northwest corner of the site. Franklin Sensors has frankly little to no landscaping along their buffer. We're pretty limited on how much frontage we have. And I've also had a lot of discussions with ITD for their future final build out of Highway 16 and the corridor intersection with 2026. They have tapering and widening and taking all that into consideration, there's excess land area. So we'll be installing some additional landscaping. So the cars that drive by will actually see more, not less landscaping than what would be required for this site. We agree with the staff's approval and our conditions approval for that. So in conclusion, this is really, I would say it this way, it's a quality development with developers and neighbors working together. We have Brighton and Franklin Sensors and all of us working together to bring this community forward. It really could have been a phase three of developments from Brighton, but it's not that way. It's just a different owner coming forward. But we're enabling the expansion of the water for, to help Franklin Sensors out in their future development and building expansion. Closely collaborating with Brighton with their sewer and water utilities and access and Franklin Sensors too. We agree with the staff report and the conditions of approval. Planning is only commission recommended approval with no additional conditions. And our ask tonight is that you approve us as presented tonight. Stand for any questions?
Thank you, Dave. Council questions for staff or for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor.
That's one more chair.
Thanks, Mr. Yurson, for being here. If you could just walk us through, you alluded to, this will take you a while, the road will be built, sewer will be there. What is your anticipated schedule?
So, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Strater, my experience with, I'll say ACHD is the slowest. Cities aren't far behind, but say the ACHD is taking a long time. And so after tonight, we'll be moving forward with the draft, drafting the construction plans. We may have kind of started, but really can't do a whole lot of heavy lift until we know that the final decision's here. And so there's probably three months, maybe two months of drawing of construction plans before we can submit. ACHD currently is about three to four months of, of backlog before they'll give first comments to construction plans. That's minimum six months right there before we would get first comments. Maybe it's seven to eight months before we get final approval. And then it takes maybe four months to build. So that's a one year mark from today. So if we're lucky, we have it paved if we have good winter weather. If not, we're paving it the following spring. Answer your question.
Thank you.
But I would hope we can pave it by Thanksgiving next year, but that's, that's just hopeful. That'd be best case for us.
Mr. Mayor.
That's important.
Comment and a question. I like it's very thoughtful design, the road, the roadway on the northern portion. That's just really well done.
Thank you.
But I had a mechanical question on the, on the the buffer in ITD right of way. Educate me on how that works. I, we just don't see it a lot. And I don't recall the mechanics of, does the HOA have a, have a license right in perpetuity to go upon it and maintain it and plant on it, et cetera? How does that work?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Borton, as an attorney, I'm sure you'll appreciate the process and the requirements. Whether it's grass or short shrubs. There's actually a little bit of distance requirement. They won't, they won't want tall trees and really it's about safety, right? So they, they have two factors. One is you don't want tall trees up against the cars. And secondly is they want to maintain the drainage swat off of the highway. And so there's some standards requirements we have to meet to, before we can landscape, we have to make sure they approve the landscape plan to those standards. And then secondly would be maintenance of that landscaping. And the, yes, the HOA, whether it's grass or, or sprinklers or shallow rooted shrubs. All the above would be HOA responsibility. And that's all through a license agreement. It's ITD, I've done that several times. I'm not sure I've done it a lot here in the city meridian, but in the city Beagle, the Castleberry burn, you might be a little familiar with that one on Chindon. There's any grass that cheats across the right of way is a burden responsibility that you need to maintain. Sure.
Council, any additional questions?
Mr. Mayor, I had a question for staff.
Council, Mr. Ray.
Just a little detour really quick, but I wouldn't go far. Question for Deputy Chief Bonjourneau. Outside of the five minute response time with the construction of a new fire station, I assume that will help. What is the response time currently? And what's the anticipated timing?
Hi, Mr. Mayor. Strater, I can't give you what the time is. Excuse me, to that area, that green blob map that we had. This is outside of that area, but we're, we're revamping and working on true response times at this time. Right now, the, the chief is working with RJAS people to fix and look at those maps in reality of what the times are. So I don't have that information at this time. I do know that in my report that I put the closest truck company is roughly 16 minutes away. And if PA standards usually shoot for 12 minutes. So, and actually the Eagle Fire Station is closest to this position than ours is. Unfortunately, Station Eight. There is no direct route from here to there. Station Five is going to be this, the straight shot for this particular development because of Highway 16. So they're blocking off McDermott. So McDermott will no longer be viable for us. So they're literally going to have to go around the mile to get to this location. So Station Five is still going to be the fastest and closest station there.
Mr. Mayor.
Council, Mr. Ray.
That's a little scary. So no green blob map, sorry to hear that.
My understanding is it's our, it's going to be a brown blob map.
Whatever color of blob is usually going to work for us. But so, but can you take a swag at it? I mean, are we talking like this is a 10 minute drive? This is a, I mean, even if it's like a Google Maps thing, you gotta give me some kind of an idea.
Sure. It's 3.3 miles. So if I was to take a swag, it's probably seven minutes. Let me look real quick, I can tell you.
Okay. And maybe, Mr. Mayor.
Council, Shatter.
If you don't mind while you're researching that, Mr. Yurson. What mitigate, what mitigants are you going to put in this development? Considering it's not going to be served within our five minute response time, which that's the standard that we try to set for the whole city, not a standard that we meet unfortunately today, but we're trying. So what can you guys do on your end to make it so these homes are safer? We is, or help, help me think about how you're approaching this.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Strater, I would say two things. One is we've had some good discussions with Joe with the fire department. And when we get started on the development, we always try to think, okay, we think of streets, we think of emergency services, we think of everybody. And his answer was, I'll let him speak for himself was, I'm not concerned. So I don't see a need for mitigation when he expressed, I'm not concerned. Having said that, I also know the city meridian has approved this Brighton subdivision, which is a very large commercial and facility. So I don't know what, what's changed because you all approved it not that long ago, like a little over a year ago. And we're just on the, the edge of it. It's not that many like seconds more. So I don't know the, would defer to the fire chief. I'm not going to have to, you'll answer that question very well, but we, we don't see a concern from our end. And we've, we've, we appreciate the support, the comments from the fire chief.
Mr. Ray. Council, Mr. Strater, so your non-scientific, again, is 3.3 miles. Right now it's six minutes. Obviously, right now with all the construction they're doing on Highway 16, it takes longer to get through that intersection. I see heads nodding as, as we all know. I mean, I have concerns because that's, that's the only station that can get there within that five minutes. As we all know, with a structure fire, it's three, one and one. So you're going to have three engines, a truck and the battalion chief. So you've got 35, you're going to have probably 43 down Linder. You're probably going to get 32. And then the truck company is coming from up here. And again, that's, and it's not even the closest one, the closest one is, is in Eagle. For us, we are getting, you know, we have another one on order, but I'm not sure where the ops chief has a plan to be stationed. So I mean, I have concerns, Dave, sorry, but I do. It, it is just, it's just, we got one station that's close by and that's it. And then they're, they're going to have to wait because of the three, two in, two out rule providing a structure fire. I mean, we just, we just have to wait until that second engine arrives on scene to, to allow them the time to go in and fight a fire. Excuse me.
Mr. Mayor.
Fully functioning truck that's available to use right now that you can put it stationed in the meantime?
I can't answer that question. I'm not sure. We, we have a second one. Yes. I just don't know what the status is of it.
Yeah, I think that before this was ever in operation, obviously Station Eight would be open. You know, so from that standpoint, and I, I don't want to get into how people are going to drive there, but will Highway 16 be a faster route to get on the, that U stick? And then get off here? I don't know. I mean, those, I mean, yeah, I can see that being a more direct route, a faster route than going other ways.
Around the mile.
We don't know yet.
Mr. Mayor, if I could add one more thing, I know that Brighton's planning on building a light at the entrance of the site on Chindon, which also in some ways helps with in and out access. Mayor may not help with response times, that's, you know, for, for Joe to side. But this first we've heard about mitigation because I've never heard of that in the one year of working on this project of a need. It's
Mr. Mayor's and since, and Dave mentioned the light and that reminded me, we also have that subdivision that's going to be to the north of the Oaks. The north of the Oaks, north, what is it Prescott?
Yes.
Those, yeah. So Prescott, so we will have rustic oak that will go through. So we've, we've got a cut through to get to Chindon for Station Eight. And that's probably going to be the quickest route really is that cut through down rustic oak. Because that will get you from U stick to Chindon, the quickest route.
It's from here. Yeah, this is more along the lines of what I was wanting to hear, which was, I assumed that eight would serve this. It seems really weird. We're, we're just saying that we, because Highway 16 hasn't been flushed out and this road is, is a little bit of a tenuous link, but yeah, I mean, it'll be completed, right? What is the exact timing of when that station will be?
Station Eight? I'm sorry. Right now I think we're late summer of 2023.
October is what we're
October-ish now? Okay.
What, what we're saying for where we are, we're on time, on schedule.
Yeah.
Perfect. So well, in advance of this project being delivered.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Well, and really for, for, sorry, for Mr. Mayor and Councilwoman Strater, for us, I mean, obviously we've, we can talk to Dave about, we've talked emergent situations in the past. You know, in your clubhouse, put, put an AED and a first aid kit. I mean, that helps a ton. And then obviously they can't start building until they have water anyway. Cause you have to have water to be able to, to go vertical. So you know, the, the safety features will be there. It's just a matter of like the mayor was saying, what's, what's it going to look like for us to get there? And, and we really don't know yet because they're still doing a, making giant mess out there.
Thanks.
Yes, all the additional questions for the applicant? Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Mr. Clark, you want to set up on this item?
Mr. Mayor, three people signed in, only the applicant marked they wanted to speak.
Mr. Mayor, three people signed in, only the applicant marked they wanted to speak.
Okay. If, if anybody would like to provide testimony, please come forward at this time. If you can state your name and address for the record, be recognized for three minutes.
My name is John Peterson and I live at 6786 North Pyro Lane. And I live in this subdivision that is adjacent to this subdivision that's being proposed. And I am in support of this subdivision because it's really nice. They're not going for like a really high density. They're not trying to put 200 townhomes on 20 acres. It's actually a really, really nice subdivision. It has lot sizes that are congruent with the rest of the subdivisions that are in that area where I live. They're actually putting in like nice amenities, like a swimming pool and walking paths and really nice landscaping. And so it's just like a really nice subdivision, you know? And I'm really glad that they're not trying to just throw in at the maximum density that they could possibly get, you know what I mean? And they're just putting in something nice in the area. And Madden Homes also builds, builds really nice homes. So it will keep the values of the homes and the surrounding areas high, which is good.
Thank you. Do you have any questions? Thank you very much. Is there any bales present that'd like to write testimony on this item? See if anyone's come on online. Just have ACHD online. So at this time, so seeing no one else coming forward with the applicant, like to come forward for any final comments.
Good evening, Davey Orgerson, for the record. And sorry, I didn't know mitigation was going to be a question tonight. We've had a lot of good discussion with all the agencies along the way. We're providing a well site and working with water company to meet the needs of the water suppression system in the area. It's weak, frankly. So we, we think we are doing our part, in fact, more than our part. And, and so with that, we'll stand for any of the questions you have, but we ask for your approval tonight as presented.
Thank you. Dave, just out of curiosity, when do they think they'll build a well there? And what's their timeframe for that?
Mr. Mayor, I appreciate you saying that. So we have a tentative agreement with the water company, but of course nothing's signed until we're done tonight. And it's going to take some, some time to, to drill the well through the water resources process. I don't know if that's a year. I mean, that, that's going to be some long time. So to your point, these other infrastructure things are easily built. When I said a year from now, that's very optimistic. And so I don't have a hard date for you, but I know that it's not in this fiscal year. It'd be the following fiscal year. When, when they would have the, the finances allocated, their fiscal year allocated to, to construct it. So I don't know if it's a 12 months or 18 months. It's, it's not five years. They're ready to go. I know Brighton is pushing pretty hard to get theirs done because without our well lot, they cannot move forward. And so we're all neighbors working together out there to make this happen.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think you're out of the hook for now.
Be back if you need. Thank you, Dave.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavan.
I move to close the public hearing on item four.
Second.
Have a motion, a second to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Post nay. I just have it and the public hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavan.
I think it's straightforward application. I can appreciate, I think what is, is good about our council is concerned about the future. And making sure that we're able to serve our residents well. These projects too, that involve, I think, other outside agencies, a different watering company to me are always, they're always hard for me. And I think we've got another one later on tonight that deals with another agency. So I expect a little more robust debate on that particular one, but I think this is a good addition to our community and I'm happy to make a motion if I may, Mr. Mayor.
You may, Councilman Cavan.
After considering all staff, applicant and public testimony, I move to approve file number H dash 2022 dash 0059 as presented in the staff report on tonight, December 6th, and to approve that as presented.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Is there discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Just brief discussion. I think anytime we're considering an annexation that is on the outer boundaries of our area of impact, it's important for us to look at our response time as one of our components. We ran into an issue where we had to build two fire stations at the same time. And a big part of what created that situation, besides the fantastic growth that we've enjoyed, which is a good problem to have, is that we did a lot of annexation in South Meridian, some areas of which took over 10 minutes to reach. Even sometimes 12 minutes. And so I just think it's important that we keep an eye on that. I think the fact that we've gone through Station Eight's ability to reach it a couple of different directions and that it's a six minute response time gives me comfort around that not being the same situation in this case. Just wanted to provide that context.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borden.
Just to dovetail on that, I think, and good applicants want to make sure that response time is addressed by us as well. I like this project, just highlight some of the elements that I thought is worth noting. I mentioned the design. I think it's a very thoughtful design. I think we love seeing some R4 blended with this R8 transition to the south. I think the amenities, it's just really a well laid out project. And I appreciate the alternate compliance along Highway 16. And kind of the, the collaborative approach to solving that actually provides even a little more buffer than what would otherwise be provided, which I thought was nice to see. And the inertia from the, with the project to the south gives additional confidence. This is the end of the road, so to speak, at that edge of the city. So for all of those reasons, I think it's really well designed and done and glad to support it.
Mayor.
Councilman Borden.
You know, I, I really do believe that this project checks all the boxes, in my opinion. Well laid out, well thought out. Whoever gets that corner lot in the, in the, in the that would be the, the big one right there. It's a pretty, it's a pretty layout. It's a pretty subdivision. I love the renderings from the houses. Congratulations to the development team.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holgland.
I just like the fact that a neighbor adjacent to a development is in support. So that's always good to see. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perrow.
Well, it's nice to have a development that's staying within our future land use map designation. And have a lot of those conversations about requests to change that. And so it's very nice not to have that request. I also appreciate the access that this is going to have to Highway 16 such that services can be accessed really in three different cities pretty quickly. That's one of the things that we've been paying a lot of attention to is where our service, what, what's going to service the projects that are on the outlying areas or in our area of impact? And of course, our hope is that some, some of those residents on our west side of the city will be using that Highway 16 to alleviate some of our traffic on 10 mile. And, and so I appreciate that part of this project as well. That I think it'll be really good location for those residents to have access to multiple services around the valley.
Anybody else? I think that's the most conversation we've ever had after a motion's been made on the project most everyone agrees with. Then if that, we'll have to correct, call the role.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Schrader.
Aye.
Burnt, Perrow.
Aye.
Governor.
Aye.
Morton.
Aye.
Hi. All eyes, motion carries and the items are free too. Good luck in getting water, roads and other things soon. All right, with that, council, we'll move on to our last item of the evening, that public hearing for Hadler Neighborhood, H 2022 dash 0064. We will open this public hearing with staff comments.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Last item on the agenda this evening is the Hadler Neighborhood. The subject property consists of 20 acres of land currently zone RUT in Ada County and is located at 7200 South Locust Road, Road. You can see here on the exhibit on the left-hand side, the future land use map designates this property as medium density residential, which means we anticipate densities between three and eight dwelling units to the acre. Currently, there's an existing residence on the project and some outbuildings, and those will be removed upon development of the site. Also, if you look at the zoning map here, you'll note the, the existing zoning designations that surround this particular property as well. So you can see here is going back to Councilwoman Schrader's comments. We've annexed some properties in South Meridian and this one touch is bound on at least the, the west side and the north side and is eligible for annexation. And some of it's developable and some of it isn't at this time because of utilities. So the applicant is here tonight to discuss with you a request to annex the 20.5 acres of land from RUT to R15 zoning district and then plat the property with 145 building lots, which will consist of 52 single family attached lots and 93 single family detached lots and 11 common lots at a gross density of 7.25 dwellings to the acre, which is at the, the upper end of the spectrum allowed by the designation. Again, the applicant, like the, the previous application, the applicant is proposing to development phases with this application. And I'll go to that quickly. You can see their phasing plan here. Phase two is basically east half and then the west half is their majority of, is their first phase. Average lot size is approximately 3,600 square feet, which exceeds the minimum 2,000 square feet in the R15 district. And staff finds that the, the plat complies with UDC standards and generally complies with the comprehensive plan. This one's a, a little unique, similar to the, the last project. The site does a, but Locust Grove. And because it's an arterial roadway, we tried to minimize access points to that roadway. If I can jump back here, you can see here that Brighton recently had a project approved north of this site. And as part of that project, they are building a majority of the collector road that it runs along the north boundary of this site. So the applicant is going to build the remaining portion and then have their access that ties into that collector roadway. So that's something that's going to happen. And then there's two additional step streets, one to the east here. And then one to the south as well. Originally staff had recommended an additional step street in this location. As we got to planning and zoning commission, we worked with the applicant and decided to make this a larger open space lot and provide a pedestrian connection to that, that property to try to enhance connectivity in the area. One unique thing about this particular project is that this is the first project that is in the Kuna School District district boundary. And so at the, the public, at the planning and zoning commission, we had Ronnie Reno from the Kuna School District testify. He is here tonight to answer any questions you may have. It's part of this project and there's, his comments are also part of the public record. Other concerns that were brought up by planning and zoning commission was parking. And the applicant, as we went, worked with the applicant, they were shared a parking plan. Primary concerns by the commission for the, the parking concerns were just the narrowness of the lots. And then also because this is a reduced street section or a slimmer, a smaller street section, but it meets ACHD's policies. It does limit parking on certain sides of the road. And so that's something that the, the commission felt caused some concerns as well. So they brought that up and but I just wanted to mention regardless of the on-street parking, the applicant is going to have to meet UDC parking requirements for single family residents. So they're going to have to provide off-street parking in accordance with UDC requirements. The applicant is proposing approximately 3.49 acres of qualified open space, which is approximately 17.45%. So this does exceed the minimum of code. And amenities include picnic area, a playground, water feature, and then multi-use pathways along the collector road and also Locust Grove frontage. And so the, again, they do exceed UDC standards and also mentioned to council, I know you're probably aware of this, but they're in pretty close proximity to a, a pretty amazing regional park as well. So that's, that's always a good benefit to a development in this area. So planning and zoning commission however, did recommend denial at their, at their hearing on, at 11-3. Testifying in favor, we had Lauren Bailey and Heath Clark, the applicants. And then commenting on the application was Ronnie Reno, again with Kuna School District. Looking at the public record again for the planning and zoning commission tonight's hearing, there was none, no additional public testimony. Key issues of discussion by the commission at the hearing included school capacity, the proposed density of this project, and then on-street parking, as I mentioned. So basically there are really no, the, the recommendation from planning and zoning commission is denial. So essentially we, we have struck all the conditions of approval because of that recommendation. And the commission did cite their reasons for, for denial was based on again, school capacity, lack of, lack of commercial services to serve the development. The density and character of the development were not consistent with existing and approved developments in the area. That was the finding that they made. So other than the denial, there really are no other outstanding issues for you this evening. And staff will stand for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Bill. Council, questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perrow.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill, for that presentation. Did I hear you say that the streets are more narrow than the standard public street width?
Mayor, members of the council, councilwoman Perrow, no. ACHD has certain standards and you can have a wider road or you can have a narrower road. And in this particular case, they took the options of going with a narrow road, which is allowed per ACHD policy. That's, that's all I was trying to convey is that they meet ACHD's policies and they, they, they're building roadways to ACHD's templates. But with a narrow road comes, comes with less parking. So you can have parking on one side of the street and not the other. When you take advantage of that, that specific street section.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perrow.
So am I hearing correctly that, that the parking plan that we see up here is, is not viable because they are showing parking on two sides of the street? Is that, am I understanding you correctly?
Mayor, members of the council, no, this was just the exhibit that the applicant showed where you could get on-street parking. Which, which side of the street can be parked and which can't be. So essentially where you see these red areas, that's where they envision additional on-street parking. And so ACHD, if I remember correctly, required the applicant to build this to a wider street standard in this location. This is why you see double parking and then the reduced street sections are located along the looped roads here, along the west, south, and as you head north or east. And that's why you see only red on one side of the street, not on both sides.
Thank you. That's helpful.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
First time we've had a Kuna School District thing come up. So that's really interesting. What is the cutoff of where? I'm just curious, like going forward, is there a, what is the, where, where is the boundary of the Kuna School District? What can we expect going forward? Anything that's south of? You know, it sort of looks like half of a mile south of Lake Hazel or what's the cutoff?
Mayor, Councilwoman Schrader, I don't know exactly the, the cutoff, but I can tell you it starts here where we're at tonight. And then Skybreak, which was approved recently was, it was just right on the cusp of their boundary. But going south from Skybreak, it starts bleeding into their school district as well. So it's, it's, it's upon us. It's happening very quickly or could potentially.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perrow.
Bill, is there pedestrian access from this to Discovery Park? Is there going to be any kind of southern pedestrian access? We, all the applications we've had so far have all been on the north, northwest side of the park. So I don't know that I've ever seen any information about that on the south side.
Yeah, Mayor, Councilwoman Schrader, essentially you can see their entire frontage. So there will be a collector road that's built into their entire boundary. And as part of that road word, road project, they will be constructing a 10-foot multi-use pathway that runs along their entire boundary. And we did talk with the applicant about working on a safe crossing to get into the park across that collector roadway. So yes, we do envision that happening. And that's why you see this micro path location here to tie into the pathway and then ultimately head east and head into the park.
Seeing no more questions for staff, will the applicant like to come forward? See no more questions for staff with the applicant to come forward.
Hi, everybody. Heath Clark, two fifty one East Front Street in Boise, representing the applicant. Uh, as Dave mentioned, it's really good to see Councilmember Kavner. Appreciate. Hope you're feeling better. And I needed to make one more visit here before Councilmember Burt left, so. We are here to talk about the Hadler subdivision. And I just want to talk a little bit about a project that's very similar to ones that you guys have seen. That we've brought forward within the within the city over the past few years. It serves an important need. So let's talk first, let's see here, there we go. A little bit about the annexation route and how this fits in within the city. The project is just south of Lake Hazel, east of Locust Grove. It borders Discovery Park. It's on the south of Brighton's Pinnacle subdivision. It's an area where this where the city has invested and has indicated that it intends to grow. Uh, the pink areas are all annexed. Many of those were part of the large twenty sixteen annexation that was undertaken by the city. If you uh, with, I think it was like thirteen hundred acres, if I remember correctly. Little bit more about that. I know you're all familiar with the corridor. It's been very active with the development of Discovery Park, Gem Prep. Uh, there's been significant significant residential development over the past few years, Lavender Heights. Uh, Pinnacle, as I mentioned, the keep, uh, Sky Mesa, Diamond, all of these other projects that have come in and. Uh, around the city's uh, new park and also the city's new s- south fire station number four. Um, that will be online next year, as I understand it. And as you drive by, you can see that the walls are already well under construction. Uh, in addition to that, I would just point out that there is a a wall of city annex property to our west. So this is well within the areas that the city has already grown into. With regard to the comprehensive plan and the planning, as Bill mentioned, this is medium density residential, which does permit between three to eight units. Uh, per the acre. And then zooming out a bit, I thought it I'd emphasize that this is in addition near one of the neighborhood centers that the city has planned for. You know, city services are all available. Uh, none of the emergency service providers or utility providers have indicated any objections. Uh, I'd also point out that there are upcoming Eagle Road and Lake Hazel Road improvements that are planned for the area. And Lake Hazel, which runs just north of us, is planned to be the new Shindon. Uh, it's, as you all know, it's going to be a a five lane eventually. So this is an area that that the city has planned for a lot of activity and that activity is coming in the near future. This is our site plan. Uh, we are proposing a hundred and forty four homes, not a hundred and forty five. We took out one lot in response to the comments with uh, with staff. So the the one right, let's see if I can get this to work here. This lot, we took out a lot in order to increase the open space right here where the pathway is located. Uh, the overall density is seven point two units per acre, which is within the the planning for the comprehensive plan standard. And we also have seventeen point five percent open space, which uh, includes the large Central Park area. Um, as in our other projects that are similar to this, so that would be like Movado. Verado, Solterra, these are high quality uh, homes with a smaller footprint. We're talking about homes that are between thirteen, about thirteen hundred and eighteen hundred square feet. It's a very amenitized project. Uh, I'll mention it again here in a second, but there's eleven amenity points for this one, which is super high. Compared to four, which is the requirement. Again, um, we've done five similar projects in Meridian, uh, along with another project in Boise. They've all been very successful because they cater to an underserved portion of the market. Uh, the folks who buy in these projects are looking for a smaller home with lower maintenance, but high quality. You know, they, we study our buyers, we know who they are. Um, they are uh, empty nesters, often who are downsizing. They're young professionals who want to lock and leave it type solution. Um, and sometimes they're a divorced parent that's looking to keep the the kids in the same in the same school district. Um, the product's been in high demand since we developed it ten years ago, and it contributes to the diversity of housing stock in in Meridian. It serves an important need. And again, it is consistent with the comprehensive planning uh, between two and eight um, dwelling units per acre. And this is a screenshot from the comprehensive plan. But there are other comprehensive plan policies that are promoted here. Uh, for example, we want to encourage a variety of housing types in the area, avoid the concentration of one type of housing. Uh, this brings in a housing type with an appropriate level of density right within uh, next to the city's new park and the fire station. Uh, we've considered the area in our design. We've provided open space in the center of the project that. That's really just a a frisbee throwaway from Discovery Park. Uh, that open space will also connect, as we understand it, to our neighbor to the south, which is planning for open space in that location. And um, to Councilmember Pearl's question, we are extending the the regional pathways, which will help allow for. Uh, pedestrian access to the to the park. So particularly now, uh, where we have a housing recession that's looming, we have interest rates spiking. You know, we need a variety of housing types in the city in order to keep the housing market healthy. And so we think that this is an appropriate use here. With regard to pedestrian connectivity. We have our typical five-foot sidewalks along all the roads. We have our internal pathways and the regional pathways to Discovery Park. Um, that's about a half mile of new regional pathway that's going to be constructed with this project. Um, and I think while I've got this up, I'll maybe address Councilmember Pearl's question about the roads and the parking. So um, we have, as with every uh, application, we have conversations with A C H D about road widths and road standards. Um, if you go in front of A C H D. Uh, particularly Commissioner Hanson and several of the commissioners, though, they are very much pushing for twenty seven foot road sections. And the reasoning for that is obvious for maintenance reasons and because it also still provides a safe product. So that they will push you for twenty seven as your default. And with a twenty seven foot road section, you have parking on one side. Now, this area along the north, heading out to the stub to the east, that is a thirty-three foot road section. At A C H D's request. And so that is why we show parking on both sides there. And so the the parking uh, exhibit that I that we provided is accurate. See, as I mentioned, we exceed the project amenities requirements with eleven. Uh, I I won't belabor that. Uh, but there is the two-acre central park, and we think that that's a great connection with the with Discovery Park. Again, seventeen point five percent open space that exceeds the the minimums. And we have two types of homes in the project. Single story is the area is what we show in yellow. And then two-story that's shown in pink in the center.
That's important.
Real quick, Keith, go back to that slide. I I think you've got. Uh, one, a really good decision to remove that one lot. A lot of these slides all still show it.
Yes.
So. Clearly a good call to remove that one.
Thank you.
You had made a reference to one of the amenities in the slide prior. I was just curious, I hadn't heard it as an amenity. Attractive landscaping. I don't know what that means. Is that is that an amenity?
I think it is. You know, I think having a thought rather than.
Points for it like. It's a, it's a waystation or it's a gazebo or it's, I just have never heard anyone reference attractive landscaping as a standalone amenity.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Borton, I, you know, I think it's what we're trying to say is that it's thoughtful landscaping, trying to make sure that the project hangs together. I don't know that there's a specific amenity point that's associated with that. Hey, so um, we've also provided elevations with the application materials to show what the project will look like. And again, and you can see here, if you look closely, you can see that the homes are arranged between thirteen hundred to eighteen hundred square feet. And so with that in mind, and the size of the home kind of still sitting here on the on the screen. I want to talk about the agency responses. And uh, so other than Kuna School District, the agencies have not indicated any concerns. Um, and while we respect and appreciate the district. Uh, we have some concerns with the approach that has been undertaken here, and we'd like to discuss that with you tonight. So Kuna School District has provided a letter dated November second, twenty twenty-two. The letter shows that there's currently uh, capacity at all the schools that would serve this project. In fact, uh, this is information that was provided to us in October. There's capacity across the district. Um, you can see that there's currently five hundred and seventy vacant seats. With capacity at every elementary school. We also know how fast the district is growing based on information that they posted on their website. Uh, their growth rate has ranged from negative three to positive five over the past six years for an average of one point three three percent. So the, based on the data and the information that we have, the question is not whether there is current capacity. And actually, this question is the same question that we've, I and this council have had several times over the past several years. Uh, with regard to West Data projects, and that's the question of how the capacity will be used. When the district will have to start taking steps to ensure that there is capacity for growth. We've been through this question before. Uh, the council, as I said, we've been talking about this for several years. We know the drill. You know, West Data follows your planning. When the capacity is used up, they stretch it, they do busing. They modify boundaries, they bring in portables, and then eventually they bring it, they they bond. But because they're doing their best to be the the best stewards of those tax dollars as they possibly can, they're not going to run the bond. Until the capacity is used up. And that, and until they know that the facility is going to be used on a long-term basis. So as I understand it, this is the first application before this council that's in the Kuna School District. Um, we've spoken with Kuna School District, and they've informed us that they would inform this council that they can't serve our project. Unless we can make a cash payment per lot of three thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars. For all of one hundred and forty-four residential lots or nearly half a million dollars. Um, you know, we obviously have significant concerns about that. Um, this is from uh, the agreement that was proposed to us. So the first concern is where does the number come from? Uh, we've done these projects before. We know what numbers of students come from these projects. Um, for example, you see Verado on your screen. Uh, it's a very similar project. It has the same housing type and size. Uh, we reached out to West Data. We asked them for the actual student generation. From Verado, just to know how how that's functioning. Um, West Data informed us that it's point one two four students uh, per per lot. Which makes sense, given again that these are thirteen hundred to eighteen hundred square foot homes, largely owned by retirees and empty nesters with a few exceptions. Here's another way of looking at it. Kuna School District is telling us that Hadler will generate a hundred and two students. Based on their generation rate of point seven. That's nearly twice West Data's rate of point four three. And it's significantly higher than the actual uh, generation rate that we've. Excuse me, that we've experienced. You know, so we think the numbers are way higher than what would actually be generated out of a, out of a project like this with an older demographic. And in fact, given what we've experienced, this is likely to add to the tax base rather than real, take up significant student resources. So we have concerns about where the numbers are coming from, but we also have concerns about the one money to use, what the money would be used for. Um, Kuna School District has told us they will only support the project if we make a donation. There's no control on the use of those funds once the donation is made. But we have been told what the money is likely to be used for. This is based on the district's needs assessment, which they provided to us. And a significant number of those projects are quote deferred maintenance. Um, they include kitchen remodels at a couple of the middle schools, um, ADA upgrades. Uh, with regard to Kuna High School, there's money for the field turf at one point two million, hundred thousand for Performing Arts Center. Uh, upgrades for football turf, baseball fields, tennis courts and the tracks. And you can see that very little of this has anything to do with capacity to serve new students that would be generated for our product, by our project. So. They've asked for a donation, but we don't know what it would be used for. The majority of the funds they've identified are not capacity related. There's no control on how the funds will be spent, where they'd be spent, and there's no way to confirm that we'd be preparing, paying our proportionate share. And that's a problem for a lot of reasons. And one is under Idaho state law. Any fee established to mitigate the the financial impacts of development has to comply with the Development Impact Fee Act. That's title sixty-seven, chapter eighty-two. Now, of course, there's no such thing as a, as a school impact fee. Um, but even if there were, this doesn't meet the standards for an impact fee. With impact fees, you know they have to be paid out within eight years. The impact fees, you know that they can only be used for certain types of facilities that are related to the impacts of growth. Um, there's no capital improvement plan here that says that it's going to be used for addressing in growth. And there's no way to request a proportionate share analysis. In short, there's just no way to ensure that the funds will be used to increase capacity. So. You know, more fundamentally, you know, the district's saying that they can only provide services if we make a voluntary donation. You know, we have concerns about that, obviously. You know, the payments they've asked for to not satisfy the requirements of the Impact Fee Act. Which is mandatory if the fee were to be imposed. Um, in other words, they're asking us to agree to something voluntarily. That would be illegal under state code. And even if we do it, there's just no way to ensure it's going to actually address the needs of our students. So. You know, we just, excuse me, we're asking to just follow the rules. In the way that we've experienced that with with other school districts in other jurisdictions. Um, the city, this city has been through this already. We know that the answer is that we have to get behind the district's efforts to support a bond. That's how we've handled it for a hundred years in this state, and these ad hoc impact fees aren't the answer. So with that, I think my time's up and I'll just. Um, I would just mention one thing, Mr. Mayor, is that if we are fortunate enough to get an approval tonight. I think the one housekeeping item that we would have to go back to is in the redlined conditions of approval in the staff report. In order to make the change that Bill mentioned, we would just need to modify condition two point A, as I've noted on the screen. So that was a lot.
Thank you, Heath.
Thank you.
Council, questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pearl.
Um, you mentioned the the demographic in Verado, and I'm familiar with all of. All of the neighborhoods that you had had mentioned that are, um, you anticipate modeling this after. Do you think that, given that location, that you're going to have the same demographic as Verado? Um, with the park, with the Y M C A down the street, swimming pool there. Um, do you really anticipate there being an older demographic in this equivalent to Verado?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Pearl, absolutely. Um, remember, these are thirteen hundred, eighteen hundred square foot homes. The size of the home is what drives it more than the the location. Uh, the location is great because we should be wanting to have lots of different housing types all around Discovery Park. So that all types of people get to to use it at all different, you know, areas, uh, areas of their life. Um, you know, I can definitely picture the empty nester wanting to take their dogs out and going to the dog park up there. Because, you know, that's the type of person that really likes to use a dog park. So, no, we don't expect it to be any different.
Mr. Mayor, a follow-up?
Councilwoman Pearl.
Um. I think we're going to see more families purchasing. I assume these are, if it's the same model, these are going to be for sale. I think we're going to see more families purchasing these types of, especially townhomes. Well, well, the two stories for sure, but the townhomes as well. Um, because, well, it just depends what happens with rates, right? Housing prices were keeping families from purchasing single-family residences. They were moving into townhome style, patio home style. And duplexes. Um, and I think that we're going to see that come into play even more for a variety of reasons. So um, it, i- if these are modeled after this, this. Um, other neighborhoods, there's going to be some two-bedroom units as well as some three-bedroom. Um, do you, do you think this particular product, if it's similar, is gonna, is going to um? Accommodate, I I I respectfully, being in this industry, I disagree with you. I think we'll see more families in this than we have their other. Products, um, because of its location and because of what's happening in the market. So just, I want to put that out there and just understand. That um. To that end, that's the reason I'm asking the questions about access to the park. And in regard to the amenities, never thought I'd say this, but I actually don't think a playground is necessary in this. Uh, which is, I never said that before. I had to say that before. So in that regard. Um, are there any other amenities that were discussed besides having a playground, since the park is so close? That might then meet, if you're saying that you think it's going to be more seniors and more singles. Then families, why have the playground here and then have the playground in the park next door?
Too many slides here. Maybe it'll get there. So. Yeah, the, the idea is not to duplicate anything that is at Discovery Park. The idea is to have the types of, you know, a playground that would be complimentary. And so this applicant in the past has done things like climbing boulders and those, those sorts of, of playground amenities. That would be a little different maybe than what's over at Discovery Park. So I don't know that there's been a specific design that's been concluded there. And I'd be asked, is there anything else? Mr. Mayor, this, just conferred with my client. One of the thought processes that went into the idea of maybe having some of the more focused. Younger child amenities there is just that it, it is a little bit of a walk for a little kid to be able to get all the way up to the Discovery Park stuff. So this would allow for some things that are a little bit closer if they were to cater to the younger demographic there.
Mr. Mayor.
Council member Schrader.
I didn't mean for that ominous sound to happen.
Is that a record scratch that I just heard?
Sounded like. If you could pull up the, the renderings. Okay. So I had a question, which was. And this is, it looks like you've got your detached here. But if you kind of go through the attached and detached. I was trying to figure out what the dimensions are of the street frontage. Can you actually fit a car that's not blocking a driveway in between these homes?
Yeah, I think it's, it's between 32 and 38 feet of street frontage on most of the lots.
Okay. Just so I'm clear on that.
Those are two very different subdivisions.
No, this would be more like Mabato, but the, but this, the smaller product type portion of Navado, Mabato, excuse me. So the, the example that I provided you of Verado is probably the closest one.
Heath, one thing that I'm, I'm assuming the mail pickup locations are those little brown boxes. Am I close to where those in theory would be on the either end of the linear pathway? Where you have, I guess, you know, I only have what's near my home for another subdivision. I drive by and we have cars parked on the right-hand side and then people are pulling up on the left-hand side. There's still room for us to get through because of those wider streets, but when these are smaller streets, I, I don't know if you, can you reserve a place for people to stop in? I don't know how busy it's going to be. It is a smaller area, but just worried about people being able to access when you are trying to get people to stop in an area.
Mr. Mayor, we anticipate that the, the male kiosk, can't think of the correct word right now, will be at near the pathways. So they would be in locations kind of like around here or around here, where you're not going to have as much of a confluence of home and driveway. You're going to have actually more room to pull out if you need to be able to do it.
Those are areas where you currently have parking slated. I'm just, even if something simple is like parking for, no parking except for picking up mail, because you have a smaller street. That's my concern is the cars maybe parked there and other cars are pulling up to get their mail. And then there, you don't have room for other traffic to get by. Small thing, minor thing, just a noticeable thing that I'm seeing is, is even in the very small subdivision behind my subdivision, nobody walks to the mailbox. They all drive up at five o'clock when they get home or 5:15 to, to check their mail.
Absolutely. Yeah. The, so with the 27-foot road sections, they are sign, there will be signage on the other side saying no parking. So there would only be parking on the one side, but that's actually a great note and we'll take that into account.
Then I will hope, give you my comments on the school district. I'll say that.
Mr. Mayor, last question because it's an interesting part of the staff report. So Mr. Parsons can, can see if your answer suffices, but it references, and it may be academic because you've got the park to the north, but the allocation of open space qualified one half of the arterial street, and I don't recall ever seeing a staff report reference to the new UDC requirements and, and some uncertainty as to whether or not it meets those. So, Mr. Clark, can you present evidence that these buffers are enhanced beyond the pathways, trees and grasses?
Yeah. I'm sorry I'm laughing because I remember, when was it? A year and a half ago or ish when we redid the landscaping ordinance? And I came and provided comments and one of the comments was, I don't know what the heck these things mean on those standards. It's, I, it's just kind of funny to, to be back here. So the, the questions are, you know, whether that this aligns with the quote unquote enhanced amenities with social interaction characteristics and the enhanced context with the surroundings. I think those are the two factors that staff mentioned that they weren't sure if it's satisfied. So I, I think it's pretty straightforward. The landscape buffer includes the regional pathway. And the regional pathway is where you go to walk, where you go to interact with your neighbors, where you take your dog to go up to the Discovery Park Dog Park. So I think it's pretty clear that there are social interaction characteristics that are associated with that pathway. In addition, the regional pathway also connects to Discovery Park. So it's a way of being conscious of the surroundings and the overall design. And so from that perspective, we see that as satisfying both. So I hope that answers the question, Councilmember Warden. Thanks.
Mayor.
Councilmember.
I just have one more question. So the sewer services and everything are dependent on Apex Phase Three. So what's the timing of your project?
Yeah, Councilmember Strater, the, the timing of the project is, I think, given where we are in the year and where we're likely to be in the construction cycle next year, I don't think we'll have paving in 23. It'll probably be 24. And so that means that we, we fully expect that those services will be there by the time we're ready to, to go forward.
Anything else for council for the applicant?
Great. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you very much. Council, do you want to take a break before we get into public testimony?
We got it. We got a yes. So we'll go ahead and take a break and reconvene at five after, ten after?
Five after, May 05. Councilman Caver, are you there?
I am. Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we are, we'll go ahead and come, come back from our recess. And Mr. Clark, we have made sign-up for my testimony this item.
Mr. Mayor, we did. We have one in person and one online with our hand raised. First is Robbie Reno with Kuna School District.
Robbie, welcome. If you'd like to say your name and address for the record, please.
Robbie Reno, Kuna School District, 711 East Porter Street, Kuna, Idaho. We're your neighbor to the south. And like staff said, this is our first property that involves your, your great city. First mayor, mayor and honorable members of the council. It's interesting times in the city of Kuna and our, and our school district boundaries. The applicant, the reason that we are here coming to not only your council and our city council expressing concerns on growth is because of the unprecedented growth that's happening. Currently, right now, there's 5,000 homes that are, that are annexed, plotted and approved to be built on top of the Hadler subdivision that has not been approved or annexed. And so because of that, the growth that we've had, yes, Mr. Clark showed our growth patterns, but we've had COVID in the middle of that. We've had a decline. We've had increase. But even if we take the 1.33 at 5,800 kids, that's over 700 kids in one year. That's enough for an elementary. We try to push for 600 kids for an elementary as the size. So if every year we're getting 600 kids every year, that's a lot of kids. And we've, we had a capital plan. We've had to scratch that and we took a year process with our constituents and with our community to create a 10-year plan that is, that finally got adopted on the first phase of it last month at our board meeting. But in that, in that plan, in that 10-year plan that we, we're going to need six elementaries, two more middle schools, in addition to the current partial high school that has been built. And so we have a lot of growth that is coming our way, that is approved. So our board is having to take action. And so that's kind of the backstory of why, why I'm here as an agent of the board. Our board has recognized this and wants to take action on those. Mr. Clark mentioned Idaho Code that schools do not get mitigation fees or, sorry, impact fees, and he's correct. But there is an Idaho Code, Section 676513, that is the subdivision ordinance that US Council are, sorry, not US Council, but it includes school districts in that, that a developer subdivision, which this is a subdivision, can have mitigation. And that's what we've asked for them for that, to help with the mitigation. So it's not passed on 100% to the current residents of the city of Kuna. You, the client referenced that he doesn't know where the money is going. We've been collaborative and we work with them that we put it in a discretionary fund, sorry, not discretionary, a capital, the capital improvement fund. We gave him that list so that he could choose what projects and which things his, he would want to put his name on to help promote his subdivision for those things. We are collaborative in this process. We want to work with developers. We want to do this.
You can wrap up.
No, and, and so we, we, we want to work with the developers to come to a conclusion, to help so that we, if we don't, so that we can mitigate those, those capital projects. So we don't have, so that we can build schools. For example, we've gotten over 60 acres donated at that cost of, or sorry, over 160 acres donated. That has saved us, our district $27 million. Well, currently that's the cost of one elementary to build. So no, we don't have to bond for, for $54 million to build one elementary. We only have to bond for 27 million. So that is a mitigation has helped, helped our schools and our board be responsible for this. And all we're asking is, this is a simple annexation and that we just, we can't serve without collaboration with that developer.
Council questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Caver.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. And Mr. I, you know, I realize we gave Mr. Reno three minutes. I kind of look at him as a representative of a group. And so I guess I just was going to ask if he needed more time to kind of explain his basis, maybe that we consider that. If, if not, I, I do have some questions for him.
Need more time to?
I'll take the questions because I think that's more important. I'll save you guys time and I can go on and on, but I know you guys have specific questions.
Thank you then, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you though for the opportunity. Yes.
So if I understand correctly, you are both a high school principal, but also an acting agent of the board. Can you kind of walk the city council through what, what that role is?
So we joke in the, as the admin team in the, in Kuna School District, that you're not just an admin, you wear multiple hats. Because we run a tight budget and we run very efficiently, that we have multiple positions within our position. So I'm lucky enough to be the principal of Swamp Falls High School, our newest high school. That's not quite a high school. So I have some, some, some time in my day to, to take on this additional task. Another administrator is our district safety coordinator on top of being a principal. Our other, another administrator is our district title. I mean, we just have multiple roles. And so
Got it.
As, as the board has designated me and another person in the district, because it's been a priority of our board to help figure out this situation that we're in. That's, it's been a priority for the board. So our superintendent designates those positions to help the board achieve their goals.
Well, and kudos to, to you and, and your team for being small but mighty and trying to, you know, everybody is rolling up their sleeves to serve the students. My, I guess maybe my first kind of overall question is, what was the basis of determining that the fee amount? Has, has the district conducted a cost recovery analysis or a fee impact analysis against your 10-year plan? Where did the dollar amount come from?
So the dollar amount, so we had Tishler and Beash do a study. How much, what would it take to, for impact fees to cover the cost of schools? They came up with a rough number, about 30, 30, 34,200 or $32,700 per door to help with, to, as an impact fee to cover the, the cost of schools and the growth. So we took that number, as the board took that number and said, okay, if developers can take 10%, $3,270 and that be the mitigation, then we're not asking our current residents to burden 100% of, of the burden that we're only asking for 90% to help pass our bonds, to help that, and to be more efficient with those. That's where that neighbor, that, that number came from.
Mr. Mayor, a couple of follow-ups if I may.
Councilman Caver.
Yeah. So Mr. Reno, how, how many units in the Kuna School District history has this fee been attached to?
I'm current, so this is new in our process. You know, when you start something new, you don't know what you're doing. And so currently we've, through land donation, and we don't say straight, straight money. We want to be collaborative. Are there capital projects? Are there other things, land? Other capital expenditures that you can do to help offset the cost of use, bond monies to pay for schools. And so currently we have one, two, four, four developers for sure that have agreed to, to close to previous amounts before we got the Tishler Beast study. And then we've had two land donation sites that are equivalent to the 3270 per home.
Okay. So Mr. Mayor, maybe, maybe I didn't ask the question the right way. So since you, the district completed this Tishler Beast report frankly, I, I would hope that something the district would share with the city of Meridian. How much have you collect, how much have you assessed? How much does, I guess, the city of Kuna assessed on your behalf and collected?
So the city of Kuna cannot collect it. We have to collect it. And so
So how much is that? How, how much have you assessed from development? Or you have said, we need $3,200 per door. How many doors have you collected money for?
Current, well, we put it on, we, we, we helped, we worked with the developer. We put on, okay, the building permit or the occupancy permit. And that's something we were collaboratively with this developer. So, okay, when it's an occupancy, you know, that's when it would, to help the developer sell their property and ensure that the product doesn't incur debt on them. Currently, we have not, we've only collected land donations because other projects have not commenced. They are in the pipeline because there's a sewer problem in the city of Kuna.
So if, 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 if I were to say that you've collected $0 as a result of this assessment fee, I would be, I would be correct.
Correct. We've, we've, we've gotten land and we have agreements with other developers.
Okay.
But they have not broken ground on their projects.
Just, Mr. Reno, as a side, I'd love to see a copy of that report that you guys have, have conducted. I think that's helpful for us. This is not going to be the, the last time that we'll have an application for an annexation in front of us in Kuna. And understanding the consistency of your approach, and certainly we see in Meridian all the time, developers see a benefit to their development to include extra green space or land for schools. And we certainly applaud that. There's a difference of that being a competitive element to incentivize their neighborhood as a place for families as opposed to, to requiring them. And I think one of the things that this council has been really supportive of is that we want to make sure that we are addressing the impacts of schools holistically. But I'm, I just want to be real frank with you. I'm, I'm, I'm very hesitant for the, an annexation within the city of Meridian to be the very first one to either ask or condition or anything like that, some type of a, of a fee for us. So it just, it just seems a little out of sorts for me to, to hear from the district to say, this is, this is where you guys are. And maybe a good message to go back to your school board is that we have a very strong collaborative relationship with the West data school board, and we'd love to be able to hear from Kuna School District members as well.
Absolutely. And, and do I just provide that to Mr. The City Clerk?
Yeah, that'd be great. Great.
Mr. Mayor. Councilman Holden.
To that point, Mr. Reno, what, what has the school district done with Kuna City Council in terms of, of informing them, having meetings, trying to work through this, this situation and what's been the outcome if they have had these meetings?
Um, we meet once a month with the mayor and his legal team and our legal team. We, we do, we've done joint meetings with the school district and their city council and the city, Kuna City Council. Very involved with them and being collaborative with them.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Holden.
Are, are they stopping development? Are they, have they done it? We've, we've looked into moratoriums at one point with our West data. I mean, where, where are they in that process? What, what, what's the outcome of those meetings?
So like I said, it's been mixed, right? Ones that developers have supported us, we've been in support of them and they've passed. And ones that haven't, some haven't and some have. But we're, we're, we're getting that to a, a much better process with our city. And so.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
Yeah, that's really interesting. So just to recap, make sure I'm following. So it sounds like you've had, since you've adopted this approach, you've had seven developments that have either donated land or paid this mitigation fee.
Or, or other mitigation.
For other mitigation. Okay.
A developer donated a bus.
Okay.
Other, other things to help with that.
Got it. And then the approach with your city council has been you're, you're providing your opinion on each development. And you're asking developers to provide this fee.
Mitigation.
Or mitigation. Okay. And so I, yeah, I mean, because one, one, I I think the biggest issue I would have is consistency. Right? And and I think this is going to be a much bigger issue than just this development.
Correct.
And we are aligned in the sense that I personally feel it is very unfortunate that we don't have a way to build new schools efficiently and effectively in the state of Idaho. We deal with that with West data all the time, too. This is just a different approach, certainly than West data has taken. But I appreciate, you know, you're giving a very clear answer as to whether you could support these students. So is the math behind? You've got, so you've got a limited amount of capacity. You have five thousand units coming. You're also, you also have kids graduating every year. And so is that based on a projection of the delivery of those units over time? Like how? What kind of went into the, if you don't mind, you don't have to give me like the ins and outs, but
I'll I'll give you a simple, a simple answer. There's capacity and working capacity, like this room. It's an occupancy of four hundred and forty, but we know we could fit six hundred people in here. An elementary school has ten classrooms, but by that, you know, by an architect's definition, ten classrooms, thirty kids per class. You, you have, that's enough for three hundred kids for that elementary. Well, we have to have a special added room. You can't have more than ten fifteen kids in that room. Kindergarten class, you don't want thirty kids in that class. You want twenty, twenty-five. And so when you do that workable capacity, that that architectural capacity of three hundred kids per that for that school of ten classrooms is not really three hundred. It's more two twenty-five. So yes, we've, one thing this process has done is made us get better at our data. Because it's getting attacked. I mean, and so we need to get better at our data as far as, because currently we publish our architectural capacity, not the workable, teachable occupancy.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Schrader.
Yeah, I very much understand because we went through with West data and they eventually, because of our nonstop pestering, created a projection model that differentiated between physical occupancy and, you know, they they've attempted to do something similar around what their actual serviceable capacity is, but it, I don't know if it ever really arrived at the same level. But in terms of the concern about the amount that is approved, so you have five thousand units approved. Is that delivery in the next five years, ten years, twenty years?
So we have a projection in the next ten years, that'll be about four thousand kids without a seat if we don't, if we don't build those six elementaries, build those two middle schools and finish another five A high school.
Okay, that's really helpful. And I just want to appreciate you for coming and being very frank about that. We face the same challenges, but we've had a little bit of a different approach so far from our district. But this is helpful.
We tend to be the first, we we did all-day kindergarten as the first district in the state, and so we we like innovation.
Fantastic. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilon Pro.
Also, like my fellow council members trying to wrap my head around how this model will work. So am I understanding the intention then is with this collection of fees that the district would use cash to to build and move forward? So or is this going to be some sort of down payment or source cash that's leveraging? The reason I'm asking is because the the assumption is that all of these homes close and upon occupancy you receive funds, but the economy doesn't work like that. You're going to have ups and downs in the next decade. And so if you're planning on delivering these schools over a ten-year period and you don't have the cash to build the first one because enough homes hasn't haven't closed, how is that a stable model of funding? And then and you've kind of made this promise to developers at the front end, but then you can't deliver an elementary school in two or three years because other developments haven't closed. It just, it's it's creating a designation to one developer dependent on others closing their developments as well. And I I guess I'm just not understanding how that is something they can rely on.
Correct. But if we don't pass a bond, we will, we have, we can't support them anyway. And so it's not a, it's not gonna, it's not gonna fix the system. It's just to help our constituents, our patrons see that developers are helping and so we can sell a bond to the people. And that's, it's to, it's to help make up that difference because, right, when you build a house and you buy it in November, those tax rules don't go to our levy rate until that next year. And so there's a gap there. And we're, that's another way to look at it, too, is we're trying to fill that gap as far as that component. But like I said, it would go into a restricted fund where we can't, you know, I'm not going to get a half a million dollar raise because I got this, but I know it's going to go to a capital, it's going to go to restricted fund to build off of those, those, the, the capital projects with a tenure plan.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilon Pro.
Has the city of Kuna officially passed a policy that they're going to require this for new developments within city limits?
One thing that they've done is they've made Kuna School District a critical agency. Currently, you know, fire, police and sewer and those are critical agencies. We are now considered a critical agency under the city unit code. So they can deny under a request of a cr- critical agency. I don't know if West data is a critical agency in in your city.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton. Councilon Pro.
Sorry, one, one more thing I have. So so I I don't know if you're familiar with what Mr. Clark was presenting in terms of West data's plan for when a school, when schools are over capacity, they kind, they kind of have a, you know, priority list to how they handle that. Do you have something similar before you get to the point of constructing new building?
Correct. Currently, we bus at Reed Elementary, we bus kids to Indian Creek and Ross because and that's one thing, we're getting better at our data. We want to look at a district because we're still condensed. We are not spread out. This this development, other developments will help spread us out. But right now we're pretty condensed, centralized, so we can bus kids to elementaries. We can add portables, but then again, you know, we can do those things as as we as we need. But yeah, the we we shift elementary schools. We shift between our two middle schools and we will have one high school in the in the annex of the high school. We move programs if we need to, we can redo boundaries. We've we've done that before. So for example, in our last ten-year plan, the plan was to take sixth grade that was in the elementary schools, take the bond money. That was passed, we could only bond for forty million. We don't have the tax base that Meridian does. Eighty-eight percent of our tax bases is residential and twelve percent is commercial. You guys are way better at commercial, which is awesome for you and takes the burden off our off homeowners. But what we can do is we can we can redraw lines and 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 do those things, too.
Mr. Borton, did you have any questions? Um. Mr. Reno, that had a privilege of seeing Swamp Falls, a beautiful facility. You should be very proud while you were there. And Senator Burt definitely is a big advocate of the CT programs. And if you haven't been down there, you may want to go check it out as well in the future. As an agent of the board, these are not directed toward you, but I will ask the question, as it was inferred. Would Kuna School District be supportive of this project if they had received a financial contribution from the developer?
Yes.
That is the policy of the board, that if you pay them money, they will advocate in support of residential growth and development.
Or mitigation.
Or mitigation.
And so, yes. As the board, that's the direction the board has taken.
Okay, so it really has nothing to do with your ability to serve now or in the future. It's you pay, you're approved.
Well, the hope
From the Kuna.
The, sorry, Mayor. The hope is that as we collect these, it'll help what bridge that gap so that we can pass those bonds from our from our constituents.
Yeah, personally, I'm just gonna give my two cents. I I spoke out against ITD having a very similar policy of voluntary payments for highway mitigation when they don't have an impact fee statute. I understand there's a need. But I, you know, I'm not the attorney up here. We have two others. But I highly encourage this council not to consider these type of things in the deliberations, this voluntary or not exaction, I'm going to use those words, not their legal team, but it it just, it it doesn't feel right, you know? If if there are state laws that need to be changed, we will go help you try to, and we do, that's what we work with, but that I don't think this is good public policy when it comes down to a financial, to get an agency to agree based upon a financial contribution. And if you don't do that, then they are not willing to be supportive. That's my two cents. So just had to say it on the record. And I know it's not you. It's your board's
Yeah, yes, yes. No, I know. And that's one thing that we all got to remember is I'm an agent of the board.
Yep.
Not me that's doing this.
Absolutely. So.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilon Pro.
I know we're not here to make a determination on Kuna's board policy. I agree with our mayor, but I I just want to say I don't, I don't think it's a feasible financial model. That's my primary concern. That being said, if the city were to agree to annex this property, how will and and not not encourage the applicant to make that contribution? We can't, we can't condition it. How is, how is the city and the, and well, you can't speak for the city. How is the school board going to treat the applicant? Are they going to still allow that? I mean, obviously you have to allow their students to attend schools. But is this is going to create a challenge for them in any other way?
As far, so if you, I mean, yeah, this is, this is developments on our northern boundary, the closest elementary, because we don't have a school on the east side of Meridian Road, as far as like that, that area, they would have to be shipped all the way to to Ten Mile. Is that the zoning for that school district is on Ten Mile and it's not Ardell. Mason Creek. So it's, I think, seven point one miles from that subdivision to the closest elementary. Seven point one miles. Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Schrader.
Yeah, I I just some feedback. You guys are doing it the way you want to do it, and I get that. As a decision maker who wants to support making sure we treat schools as a essential service in our community. I I personally think a moratorium or a more principled approach would 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 make more sense because if you had come up here and said in the next ten years, you know, we can't serve. Yeah, we're we're going to have four thousand kids without seats, and that's the decision-making point for us. And it wasn't about this fee. Then I'd be behind you a hundred percent. But it's that there's this trade-off, which you've yourself said outright that you would support the development if the fee was paid. I'm I'm having a really hard time with that. Unfortunately, I think I'd have to sort of exclude that from my decision-making tonight for that reason. It's not personal. I I get it. You're here as one representative. You know, but I I do want to say I hope that we can work together in the future closely to try to come up with an approach and you know, the this impact fee issue is a huge issue. And or I think we're all stronger together, trying to figure it out together. So thanks for coming.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilon Pro.
I just want to quickly say thank you very much for being here. I've learned a lot. I know it's hard to have these conversations. We're all sitting up here making very candid, sharing our candid thoughts. So thank you for being here this evening and spending your time doing this with us.
Absolutely. Sorry about the game. It's okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, next is Julie Edwards. And Julie, you can unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Uh, my name is Julie Edwards. I live at thirteen ten East Mary Lane in South Meridian. And I just wanted to say that I appreciate the Kuna, Kuna School District coming forward with their honesty and concern for accommodating their new students and sometimes feel like I wish West data would do the same. I just wanted to say, too, that I feel like the, it's easy for the developer to say, well, it's just, it's just another hundred kids, that's all. But in the bigger picture, just south on Locust Grove, I believe it's Locust Grove and Hubbard and to the south. There are hearing signs there for five hundred and thirty-six homes going in. So beyond the, you know, the five thousand that are planned, there's five hundred and thirty-six just to the south of this project. Another thing is the housing. I think a variety of housing is great. I would still love our wide-open pastures, but I understand that's disappearing. So a variety of housing for a variety of people is great. However, but we also like space to breathe, right? People want to walk outside. I agree with, I can't remember which councilman said it. But getting rid of, if at all possible, the playground and even minimizing the green space to whatever the requirement is, I think thirteen percent or something because of the school, or I'm sorry, because of Discovery Park, just to the east. Common driveways, I'm always gonna kind of I'm not a fan of the common, common driveways. And on the on-street parking map, the bottom right section, there's a common driveway, and then there is one, two, three, four, about fifteen houses, fourteen houses, where there's no parking on either side of the road. So you have no parking, extra parking for the common driveway and about fourteen houses in a stretch there. So less green space because there's a whole bunch of it at the park. And slightly larger lots. So then if somebody does have smaller kids and they wanted that small little playground, they could just get put a play structure in their backyard. And as far as variety of houses, too, I don't know if there's a variety of housing prices. For example, Lavender Heights, just to the north of Discovery Park. I stopped and looked at one of their flyers last year, and they had two-bedroom, two-bath homes, about eleven hundred square feet for a half a million dollars. And it is four houses sharing one driveway. So I'm pretty sure there aren't people out there who are so excited to spend a half a million dollars and share a driveway with three other homes.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
Council any questions?
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have any mail sign up, Mr. Clark?
Mr. Mayor, that was everybody.
Can't see anybody present that'd like to come forward and provide testimony on the side and like to come forward?
Good evening. For the record, Dave Jorgensen, fourteen two fifty-four West Battenburg Drive, Boise. I do not live near this place. But my son does. My son would be a potential buyer, an occupant for this community. My son is a newly married, like I was texting him during the evening here. He's he's studying for his CPA exam. He's trying to be, he does tax work here in the city of Meridian. He's a resident of Meridian. And he rents. He would love to buy. Interest rates are awful. We could have discussions all day long. We're not. We could talk about how tough the housing market is because of what interest rates have been doing. It might be a little bit short term. I think in the summer we could see a little bit of relief, but until we do, it's really tough. So I would just like to say that my son, who is newly married with a six-month-old child, might be a potential buyer for this community. I'm not going to say I'm supporting or against. That's not my role here tonight. I would also like to say I appreciate the discussion about schools tonight. This is a tough thing. And leave it at that and stand for any questions.
Thank you. Council any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holden.
Dave, just you do
Dave, just you do development out in the Kuna area. And what, what, I guess you could speak for yourself. I'm just curious to what do developers think about this approach that the school district has taken? I mean, that's, it seems interesting. And I know that developers do oftentimes will donate land for a school site and whatnot, but I don't know what you want to share, give me your thoughts on, on that arrangement? And if there should be something more formal, I am just, it is an issue. We talked to West data about this, trying to figure things out. Hopefully they figure things out, but it does have an impact on cost of homes, so.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Holton. Consistency is really important and predictability is really important in the development process. And when you get surprised with a big fee and there's no line item for it, it doesn't quite work very well. So it's, it's difficult. I know of many out of state developers who are not experiencing, well, I'll just say they're considering suing the city of Kuna. I'm not aware of a lawsuit filed yet, but I heard of one today that's debating it today. With a pending application, by the way, because they got this notice from the C, from Kuna School District. I sympathize with Kuna School District. They're in a tough spot. And I always try to work with schools the best I can. I really do. I grew up in Meridian, West data school district, graduated Meridian High School. I get it. This is not, this is a tough situation. But consistency and predictability are important in the process. That's a vague enough answer to help answer the question. Sure.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
You're asking for my son's referral?
No.
Sorry, you should ask the question.
No, I hadn't thought about that, but thank you. No, I, I just like to pick your brain while you're here because we don't get to you very much.
Sorry.
What, what are your thoughts or perhaps, you know, I know you can't speak representative of the SB, but the ratio of townhomes and patio homes is, you know, we, we talk about diversity of housing and, and we have had discussions about Meridian encouraging or, or desiring additional units that meet that need because that does help offset some, some of the cost really, you know, cost issues, maintenance issues for, for residents that, that maybe now, now cannot afford a single family home in a larger community. Would, what, what do you think of where our ratios are currently? And, and whether that's something that would be beneficial to the city to consider? I mean, we, we can't require it obviously, but you know, it's, it's something that we've had discussions on.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Pro. I will speak in vague terms and not support or pick apart this development. Other than to say, it's been interesting watching Meridian evolve and mature, following the footsteps of Boise, where Boise has gone through, continues to go through this evolution. I see Boise today denying applications because there's not enough density. And we're encouraging the developer to come back. We could bring back a few more units because we need more housing in our city of Boise. That happens, I don't know if I can say more than not, but it happens quite a bit. Meridian is headed that direction probably. I don't know if you're there today, but I could see Meridian being there in the future someday. As far as your mix of housing product type, really depends on location, in my opinion. You saw an application I had before you tonight, out on the rim, you need less density, you know, bigger lots or whatever. But when you're next to urban infrastructure, like parks or other facilities, I think higher density is more appropriate. I'm not going to speak to this project. That's not my intent tonight. But that, I do think that's where your density is belonging as a city is next to public infrastructure. Happy to sit down with you afterwards if you'd like, any one of you.
Triggs buying tacos across the street afterwards, so.
Sweet. I have not had dinner yet. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Dave.
You're welcome. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Secretary.
So, Mr. Mayor, I, I think you and the council sort of understand the dilemma here and understand the, the problem. And I guess if it's okay, I'd like to at least for the record, so the public understands the dilemma you face. Because they've raised the issue about mitigation of the statute and the, and the word is in there and the, and the word is defined by you as to what that mitigation means. But the statute also goes on to say that mitigation, if it's based on fees, the fees have to be created through the impact fee process. And these weren't. These are created by a similar process or a like process to impact fees, but they don't follow the impact process because the impact fee process doesn't contemplate school fees. So therefore to apply the mitigation standard under the subdivision of Idaho Code Title 67 is problematic when you want to apply a fee that wasn't promulgated properly under the statute. So therefore you can't do that. So that's, that's problematic one. Under our ordinance, you also have to be able to find that services can be made available and that the concern they have here is that they're saying services may not be available. All school districts are constitutionally required to provide education for the children in the district. So they constitutionally have to provide it. How they provide it is up to them, whether it's contracting with other districts, whether it's changing shifts, whatever the tools and levers that they use that all school districts have to address are all available to them, just like the West data school district, as they've told you previously. But the serviceability of it is really problematic when their mitigation factor they're using isn't supported by statute. So then it's up to you as the council to decide, is their methodology of trying to enforce that and wanting you to apply our code to saying it's not serviceable based on this one methodology they've chosen, which isn't supported by statute, is that reasonable? Does that gain enough weight by this council to want to deny a project simply on that one lone condition? So those are problematic issues for decision makers to face, but I really wanted the public to understand because again, I, I understand. I've sat here a long time as well and I understand the dilemma and the concern that exists out there from all school districts with growth. And this council has wrestled with this for many years with growth. So I understand the concern. I understand the why. But the method here really is problematic in statute and ordinance to be supportive of, of that because there isn't the underpinning of that for you to defend this. And again, if we were to apply it and the opposite, as we've stated in the past, the parties don't have the ability necessarily to appeal the failing to annex a property, but they can make a takings findings, a request for a takings analysis for a finding if the denial is going to be based on something that is not based in statute. So now we then have to provide it, an analysis that we aren't taking your property improperly by forcing you to do that. So those are things I think for the public perspective, I know this is probably very legalese and nobody else is going to care much about it probably. But I think it's important to at least put on the record that although those are really compelling reasons of what the concerns are, I think the support for it, it just isn't there.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Anybody else would like to provide testimony on this item? If not us, happen to come forward to close.
Members of the council, Heath Clark, 251 East Front Street in Boise. Thanks for the conversation. Couple just quick thoughts, you know, I think what Dave said is exactly spot on. You know, what you need to have in all of this and solving this tough nut is consistency. You know, the 676513 has these requirements related to impact fee, the impact fee statute in order to provide for that consistency. So people know that if they pay those fees, that there is something that's being provided in as part of the outcome. You know, I worry that some of this actually makes getting the bonds passed more difficult, but I'll leave that for tacos at some other point, some other time. I, I'd also note that a 1.33% growth rate is actually 66 students per year, not 660 students per year. But it is a concern that, you know, we're going to try to be supportive of. And, you know, it, just the same way we are with West data. We are a small user of public services. We know our product, you know, we've studied it. Black Rock Homes has done all of these projects. They study every inch. They do follow up polls with their users. They, they know these folks. They are relatively small users of public services. And so we think that because of that and because it provides a really a needed housing type and because we've jumped through all the other hoops, we would ask for your approval tonight. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Heath, quick question for you. You alluded to earlier that the reason the street widths may be what they are is because of a preference of ACHD. Would, would you prefer, if you had your choice to have these streets wider so that there was more parking throughout the development?
Mr. Mayor, I, I think, and this is, this is planning by Heath, probably not more than, than speaking for the applicant. But, you know, in general, I, I think a narrower road section is a good thing. A narrower road section leads to slower driving. It's usually more safe. It also has less public maintenance costs associated with it. And they, and they function great. You know, we've, we've, you know, we, we see them all throughout the valley. This is actually becoming more of the norm than not is a 27 foot street section. And so from that perspective, I, I think we, I think we're good with the 27.
Council other questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
You guys have consistency, consistency down. All of your houses look the same. I'm wondering if, intended to be a joke. Anyway, I'm wondering if, if the, no, truly though, I, I, that's the only thing that I have to, to say that is a negative from what I can see is that they do look so much the same. So are the renderings that are in here, is there going to be more stonework? Is there going to be more variety than what you've done in your past projects?
So the, the renderings are all example and of course, you know, Meridian doesn't have single family design standards. So it, it will be, you know, it will be up to the applicant to identify what is marketable. So we will make sure that it is marketable. Is that, is that a, a good enough answer for you, Councilman?
Pro.
No, I know it's something we can't condition. I'm kind of just joking around with you, but I really do, I would encourage you and the applicant to give some more variety, just, just because this is a purchased product. If, if it's a, if it's a leased product, it's different, right? Folks don't have as much investment in it, but for the sake of future value, try to make it a little more interesting.
Okay, thank you.
I guess you can take a seat in the front row?
Off the hook. Okay, thank you.
Actually Heath, I did have one more question. I don't even know if it's necessarily for you or not. Since we are talking about schools, there will be a charter school that will be built half a mile away. Are they precluded from attending the students here? Are they precluded for any reason? I'm not exactly sure how the charter school boundaries work or don't work.
I don't know the answer to that, but as far as I'm aware, there's nothing that would preclude it. In that, I think you're referring to gym prep, which is, which I mentioned during the presentation and is just within a few hundred yards. Yeah, that's a good point. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Maybe I can at least scratch a little bit of the itch of your question because it's one that I had as well, and then maybe some deliberation before we close the public hearing. As, as I recall, as many of you know, I co-parent my oldest. And he lives in one school district with his mom and another school district when he's with us. He spent a big chunk of time attending a charter school and he was eligible to go to that school in part because when he lives with his mom, he was living in that particular district. And most charter schools follow a tier. And if they are over, or they are under capacity, then they can open it up to students that are outside of that district. So it really ultimately depends on what enrollment at that gym prep school would be as if students from this particular development would be able to attend or not, just for what it's worth. Mr. Mayor, maybe for some deliberation on this, in keeping the public hearing open. I came into this particular item with a lot of uncertainty, in part because I think that decisions here tonight could have some impact on future decisions for our council down the way. To me, there, there were two questions. If and can, I think were kind of the two questions that came up, or should, should this be developed? And certainly I think it meets the intention of the comprehensive plan. I appreciate the, the testimony that we heard from Julie about always concerned about density. And I think from a dense product that our comprehensive plan calls for, this is a, a unique type of density and a good type of density, that it's not one that's going to drive a lot of traffic on our roadways. I think this particular model has really scratched the itch for the need in our community, which is why I applaud that we're seeing something higher dense, of a higher density in Meridian before some of the lower density comes in first. So then it really comes to is, is now the right time? And the feedback from the school district has really, really weighed on me. And Mayor, I want to commend you. I thought your question of the district representative was, was spot on is that this, this feels like coerced donations. And I really struggle with that particular piece. I would hope that we as a council have the opportunity to engage with the Kuna School District and get a better census to their needs, to be a better partner. But I, I'm not seeing anything tonight that would cause me to be, to press pause or to delay approving this annexation. So I, I'm in support. I think it's a good fit to support some of the other land uses that are in the surrounding area. I, I know that we as a council are kind of moving into this new district area and this was within my district. And so I've taken a hard look as to how this fits within District Six and I think this is a, a good addition to our community.
Councilman Holton.
A question for staff. Bill, this, the applicant has asked for a modification of that condition 2.8 with removal one lot, looks like there was a request for two lots. And it looks like the removal of the one lot accomplishes what the Planning and Zoning Commissioner was asking for. Is, is that acceptable from your perspective?
Yeah, Mayor, members of the council, that is correct. Right now, as I mentioned to you in my presentation, there are no conditions of approval. But if the council does decide to overturn the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation, then this condition would need to be modified based on what the applicant joined you tonight.
Thank you, Bill.
To align with the revised plat that was shared with Planning and Zoning Commission.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Yeah, just a few comments. I normally, I think this far out into our area of impact, I wouldn't like to have a huge amount of density. But I do agree that considering it borders a public park, that that sort of changes the dynamic. I think it's great that it would have access to that park so directly. And it does provide a needed housing type. And we've talked a lot about that kind of missing middle housing type. And this does feel like what that is. I do think Julie has an interesting point, which is, you know, we're, we're seeing this type of housing product, but are we really going to see a more affordable price point? I think that's a question that only the market will end up determining. Markets change, things change and evolve so that as long as we keep supplying it, oh, hopefully everything's all right over there. I think as long as we keep supplying it, we're doing our end to keep the market healthy and provide that housing. The parking for me has been a concern. I'm a little bit hanging my hat on the analysis they've done on the demographics and the users of this type of product. Really hoping that we're not going to see multiple cars per household. I, I feel like the narrow streets and the, the parking are sort of a setup for a bad situation to the extent that we do end up with larger families at all that, that come in here because of affordability issues. That's my only real lingering concern. I'm very moved by the situation that the Kuna School District is in. I just, I don't feel like I can rely on, on their rationale, unfortunately, as we already discussed. So I think I'm okay with this one. And providing that, that housing type. But I, I don't really want to see super narrow streets. But I, I don't really want to see super narrow streets in general. We have real parking concerns, and I also hate common driveways. And this doesn't have a ton, but it, it does have some. So it's a little bit of a mixed bag. I really came into this thinking, based on the Kuna School District capacity, I'd be an absolute no. But I just, I, I feel it would be illegal to rely on their analysis, unfortunately.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilone Pearl.
I agree with my, my fellow councilmembers' statements. And just have one more thing to add about, you know, I under, the consistency element. I understand from a developer's standpoint, how sometimes we look at what would seem to be a really similar development in one location and say, hey, we think this works and move it to a different location and say, hey, we think it doesn't, but it's, but it's similar. So I'm going to be clear about why I think this works in this location. And that is, Discovery Park is one element, but Lake Hazel's going to be widened here. Eagle's going to be improved. Locust Grove is not, it, it, it's, it's a little rough up until you get to Overland, but it's, it's a nice overpass. They're not overcapacity on Locust Grove. So because this is in the location that it's in, I think this makes it appealing. In addition to agreeing, agreeing with Councilwoman Schrader, this is, this is very much a needed product in our community. And I also don't, you know, don't typically like these types of projects this far south. But because of how that road network is going to develop and its proximity to other recreational and services that we know are now finally coming into the south side of Meridian, I think this will work for this area.
Council, further comments, questions, or motions?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
We close the public hearing on H20220064.
Second.
Second.
Have a motion of second to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye. Close name. The I's have it. The public hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Porter, going for five for five for different motions. I like it.
Fellow councilmembers have described the, the reasons that this project should be supported. One of the additional ones is, we talk about consistency. It is, you know, our comp plan is where it all starts, is a guiding document and, and medium density is what was intended to be here. So being consistent with that long-term planning, this does just that. So for that and all the other reasons expressed, I move that we approve H20220064 is presented in the staff report of December 6, 2022. And with the modified condition and understanding the actual conditions of approval would probably be brought back next week. Is that realistic or? Or does it need to be done separately procedurally?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think our intention was to try to bring them back next week for findings. But yeah, we could approve it tonight subsequent to the findings coming back for approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there discussion on the motion? Councilman Borton.
One comment, and it's, on behalf of the Kuna School District, take aside all of the efforts. Thank you. As an educator, you're, you're spending your night. You don't get a lot of them. My wife's an educator and administrator, and you work your tail off. So we appreciate you coming out to Meridian and sharing your thoughts. On behalf of your school board, collaborating with our city, come as often as you can, but please know that we appreciate you in the time and sacrifice you make in the classroom and, and running your school.
Here, here.
Very, very, very much appreciate that.
There a further discussion on the motion? Not quite color all.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Schrader.
Hi.
Burton.
Pearl. Hi.
Cavanagh.
Hi.
Borton.
Hi.
Hi.
All eyes, motion carries, and the item is agreed to. Thank you. Anything on our future meeting topics? Or a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holland.
Move we adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Close name. The I's have it. We are adjourned.
Good night, everyone.